Founded in April 2012 after the tragic killing of Trayvon Martin. Today, we are the ones organizing black and brown youth to build power in our communities to advance a new vision we have for the state. Our agenda is called the Freedom Papers. Through it, we are advancing our vision of safety and security away from prisons, deportation, war, and towards healthcare, housing, jobs, and movement for all. We are the ones organizing to ensure that we live in a free democracy that is for us, by us. Our call to action is for you to join the Tallahassee Dream Defenders, one of the chapters in the state of Florida, to ensure that we are advancing our vision and a movement for all. Stay connected with our social medias and stay up to date with anything regarding Dream Defenders on our website at dreamdefenders.org. Now, the question is, can we dream together?
Greetings, everyone. That wasn't supposed to be there. Well, thank you for your patience, guys. This is the last day of this week's forum. And I'm super excited because we are going to be talking with some of the most more prominent communities, the ones that serve the better half of us millennials. So we definitely want to be involved in this portion of the vote here. We are going to be talking with city commissioners. We still have District 3 to talk to this evening. So unless you live in District 3, they may or may not show on your ballot. But this evening, to start off, to kick us off this evening, we're going to be talking with City Commission Seat 3. And so the names that are in this portion of this vote, or whoever we're voting for in this portion, they are going to be on everyone that live in Tallahassee's ballot. So you definitely want to tune in. I highly encourage you all to share and like this conversation. I definitely want to be able to include as much of the community as possible in here. This evening, I have the opportunity to speak with Jeremy Matlow. He's one of the favorites, I think, because so many people support him, especially among the millennial population. So unfortunately, David Bellamy could not be here, which was, you know, I don't know, I don't make an opinion about it, but you know, some people can or can't make it. But I was, you know, interested to know a lot more about his ideas and perspectives, mainly because we hear vocally a lot about the things that Jeremy Matlow does. We see him in the paper and the ways that he's involved. Obviously, he is currently holding the seat. So we can see a lot of the work he does. And so, you know, I want to know, well, Mr. Bellamy, what is it that you see that we don't see? What are some things you're thinking about that we're not thinking about? That we need to be concerned of if you are so concerned? But unfortunately, we won't be able to ask those questions today. Some people might say, ah, that's good for Jeremy, but whatever. Fair is fair. I always like to run a fair race, not to say it's not fair that he's not here. And it might be for good benefit that Jeremy is here. But I know for sure Jeremy, he has shown, this is my personal experience, have shown his commitment to serve in the community. So our conversation today is really just going to be more about some of the things that he's concerned of, some of the plans that he has moving forward. And I'm really just wanting to appeal to you all as to why we should vote for him. So joining me today, without further ado, I won't take any more time. Thank you for being here, Mr. Jeremy Matlow.
Hey, hello. Hey, everybody. Great to be here. Sorry, I'm all by myself. This is our second forum where my competitor didn't show up to speak to young people, so.
Mm-hmm. Which, because he is not a young person, I kind of wonder, like, are you avoiding us? Which would not be a good strategy, because I don't know if anyone knows this, but we did some research. And so in Tallahassee, we have a little bit over 200,000 registered voters. And the millennial generation makes up about 40,000 of that. And if you combine the millennial and actually a little bit more than that, maybe closer to 50,000 on that 40,000 range, so closer to 50. And then if you combine that with the Gen Z'ers, we're almost pushing to almost 100,000. So we're almost at half the numbers of voters. So I don't know why he avoids us, maybe because we're going to ask him the serious questions. But because he has mentioned a lot of things in the community that he's supporting and is for, that doesn't sound like it's for the young people, but I digress. Thanks for being here, Jeremy. How are you?
I'm doing well. I mean, it's 10 days or so before Election Day, so we're working hard every day, but happy to be here.
Thank you so much. And I know it's, I can imagine what all of you that are running this race are going through. Especially those who have the seat. You have your current jobs, working in the seat. You still have to run this race. And then even for you, you have jobs outside of your position. So you doing it, man.
Yeah, we're doing all we can, you know. But I mean, this election, I think, is so exciting. We talk about young people getting involved. I mean, there's a, to me, a good progressive young candidate. And probably every race across the board, city races, county races, there's over 50 local candidates who are running for office this year. And that's different from the past, because we saw kind of the same old people running again and again, and things are starting to shift. So I'm glad y'all are doing this and helping get the word out as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So all right, let's get into it. I know your time is precious, and I want to make sure we acknowledge all the important points. But I want to do like I do with most people or with all the other candidates. I want to offer you an opportunity to introduce yourself to those watching, for those that do not know who you are and what you stand for. More so focused around who you are and why you are still running in this race.
Sure. So I'm Jeremy Matlow. I was first elected to the City Commission in 2018. And a little bit about my history, I grew up in Tallahassee. I was raised by a single mother of four kids in the south side of the city. Really growing up in poverty, so I can remember what it was like to go to bed hungry, to have transportation problems, to be evicted and not know where we were going to sleep the next night. So a lot of my focus as an elected official is really bringing that viewpoint to the City Commission, because we haven't seen it really frankly at all, I think. So I stayed in Tallahassee, started my business, Gain Street Pies in Tallahassee, that started bringing me down to City Commission meetings, really engaging with commissioners in the city. And what we kind of found was really when you got there, it really just, whatever you had to say really fell on deaf ears. Nobody really wanted to listen to everyday people. And what we saw play out over the next couple of years, the FBI came to town, federal corruption trial, you know, pay-to-play schemes, you know, a whole lot of bad stuff was happening in our city. So I think we came along at a good transition point. Because when we look at Tallahassee, we have the same persistent problems that we've had for decades. You know, the same neighborhoods don't get any type of meaningful investments. And it's the most economically segregated city in the country. And the reason we see now that that is, is because our politicians have really been directing all of our resources to the most well-connected people. Those are, you know, the developers, the real estate interests. We saw it with Florida State and the $27 million Doak Campbell giveaway. All of the resources that should be spread, you know, out across the community, really trying to help people, really gets focused on a narrow few. And these are the same people who are dumping hundreds of thousands of dollars into local campaigns to try to influence the results, because it's all about putting money in and taking money out, unfortunately. So but I think the cool thing is after 2018, when I got elected, more people, more young people, more progressive people have started to step up and run for office. So the whole political network that we saw in the past, which was really dominated by this inner circle led by the Chamber of Commerce, really started to crumble. We saw that in City Commission races. We saw that when Brian Deloge at the county lost in 2020. And I truly believe that in 2022, grassroots candidates are going to sweep the slate. You know, they're ready, they're fired up, and they're running for the right reasons. So I always tell people, while a lot is going on federally, a lot is going on in our state, and so much of that can be exhausting to even keep up with. What we can do right here in Tallahassee, we have a really big opportunity. And this election is very important. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you all and talk about different issues or hear what's on your mind.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I want to kind of get into some of the things that are current issues right now. Well, not, the term "issues" always make me like feel some type of way. But anyway, so the current thing is happening right now down at City Hall. One of the questions I want to know, and you'll probably be more of a tiebreaker, because I'm hearing from both sides of the spectrum. Walani Boulevard, sorry to jump right in, but we're just going to get right in there. So Walani Boulevard, some are saying, politicians specifically are saying, this area is being reserved, the developer in that area is reserving space for affordable housing. While others are saying that that's not true. They're just saying, maybe they may probably contribute one or two plots for affordable housing, if that. And as millennials, one of our biggest disconnects with politics and being engaged is because of the misleading information that continuously happened. And so we have that distrust for those in office. Can you elaborate a little bit more about what you know for the plans for Walani Boulevard?
Yeah, sure. So Walani in general, 4,000 acres, it was all owned by a single family, a single owner. And they got this entire area brought in to our city, where us as taxpayers will be paying for the urban services there. Blueprint is funding an $80 million roadway, that's the Walani Boulevard. And before I answer the affordable housing questions, I'm just going to speak to that. Because when Blueprint was adopted, there are huge needs in our community. We look at Tharp Street, that still doesn't have sidewalks, where children are walking on trails to school. Orange Avenue, that's at capacity, where it can take 15 minutes across the street from Nims Middle School and has pedestrian issues. These projects were supposed to happen first, but Walani skipped the line, because the developers and the special interests had the power to do that. So a road for neighborhoods that haven't even been built yet, no development has happened out there, $80 million of your money was borrowed to build that road before all these roads and neighborhoods that need investment. So I want to be clear on that. But when they talk about affordable housing, we always talk about what do you call affordable, right? Are you talking about affordable rental housing? Are you talking about housing for low-income individuals? Generally, when people think affordable, it's 30% of their income could purchase or rent a house. What we've seen in their development so far at Canopy, where what they called affordable inclusionary housing was supposed to be people who made 80% AMI, so 80% of the average income, so slightly below average, you could afford to live there. But if you're anything below average, you couldn't afford to live there anyway. So what happened in Canopy, even with 80% AMI, they came back to us and said, we can't find any homeowners at the price point. Can you move it up to 100% of AMI? And the City Commission did that. So now this is the average, the median income person can afford to live there. So 50% of the community cannot afford to live there at all. And when you ask these new developers what they're building, they're talking about $300,000 homes, $330,000 homes. So I mean, it's just so dishonest to keep calling it affordable housing when half of our city is being left out. I'm a huge advocate for pushing for more publicly-owned units, publicly-built units, because, you know, quite frankly, it's not the developers' fault, it's not necessarily their responsibility. You know, they're in it to make a profit, and the housing that we need in our community right now can't provide a profit for them. So we need to look at a different course. There are opportunities in Walani. The city owns several hundred acres of land in that area. So there are opportunities, I think, to create affordable housing out there. We're just not on that track right now.
Got you. Okay. And so that leads me to talk about, you mentioned how they were able to skip past the projects that have already been requested long before now. And they've already released that these sidewalks for Tharp, as you mentioned before, and these for the areas like Nims, these projects won't be addressed until about 2040. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's about the pace we're on right now. And I mean, that's considering, you know, a big proposition that our economy stays intact that long, because it's forecasting sales tax revenue out until 2040. As we know, we haven't really had a strong recession since the housing crisis in 2008. So I mean, I think there'll probably be something that happens that lowers the available revenue. But I mean, what they're doing right now is they're borrowing future revenue to get their projects done first, and then every other project moves further and further behind, because there's not going to be enough money to complete every project. And then they'll say they'll look for other buckets of money. But these were the projects we were supposed to do first. And you know, Doak Campbell Stadium, everyone's been harping on that, because that came out of absolutely nowhere for $20 million. It was a week's notice, even to commissioners, before the idea first came up for a vote, for an idea that had never been discussed publicly ever. And they had to borrow that, so it's actually going to cost us $27 million. So the more they borrow money, the more they skip the line for their projects. Not only is it pushing the other projects further out, there's a real concern if the funding will even be there when 2035, 2040 comes around.
So being that this being borrowed, do you think that they'll at least can count on that money being back replenished in the account? Or was it a grant?
So it's being borrowed off of, they're taking out bonds on future tax revenue. So they would issue a bond for $20 million. That $20 million would go directly to Florida State, and every year we collect sales taxes. We're on the hook to pay back that bond. And so over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, or however long the bond was structured for. So we will pay it, no matter, you know, once the bond is issued, your government is going to pay it. It's just how many dollars will be left over from sales tax collection after we do. I mean, people, you know, the way they forecast revenue and projections, it changes every year, because nobody really knows. You can't really say 10 years out, how much sales tax revenue or what the economy is going to be like.
So wait, who's paying the loan, the city or Florida State?
So we are. You are, I am, all of us as taxpayers, the city and county of these blueprint projects. So we sit together as one board, the seven county commissioners and the five city commissioners. A penny of every sales tax that's collected in Leon County goes to the Blueprint and our governmental agency. It's close to, over the course of 20 years, it's close to a billion dollars in projects altogether that will be forecasted. So the new sales tax just started in 2020, and they just started collecting it. They've already spent the 27, the 20 million, the 80 million, they've already borrowed that upfront against the tax revenue we're going to collect for the next 20 years.
Wow, that's very interesting. So for those just tuning in, let me catch you up. I've been talking with Jeremy Matlow, and he does have a runner, excuse me, an opponent running against him. But I'm just using this opportunity, because the opponent couldn't make it, and Jeremy currently holds the seat, for us to learn about the things, the work that he has been doing and the way he's been advocating for the community. Because the idea, at least for Jeremy, is that we continue to support him. His name will appear in the ballot on August 23rd. Please remember to vote. Early vote is August 13th to August 20th, I believe. And so, you know, if you can't make it in that timeframe, August 23rd is the very last day for primaries. And so we definitely encourage you all to participate in that. And so our conversation today is different from others. I typically would ask other candidates in the previous forums to talk a little bit about some of their plans and, you know, why they're running and so forth. But with Jeremy, since it's just him, we're just going to, you know, talk about the goods, talk about what's going on, so we can be informed and prepared. And I hope that with his responses, if it suits your needs, that you would, I employ you to research him more, see a lot of the work he's done. He's appeared in the papers, he's always in the news for advocacy work. So you'll be able to find a long track record of work he's done as commissioner and of the things that he stands for. So I don't want to take too much time asking for too much about him. We're going to ask him some things, but not too much time talking about the things he stands for, because that stuff been made public. And more so talk more about what's going on. So thanks for being here. And so if you have questions, the chat is open. Please submit your questions. I'll definitely ask. I'll try to get to as many as I can, if it's too many. And also, I employ you to share it with your community, your audiences, your friends, because we all want to be educated when that ballot comes in front of us. So thanks again for being here. So back to our conversation, Jeremy. Now, you mentioned the special interests and the more powerful individuals skipping the line. How is that possible? How are they even able to do that if the vote, you all have equal power on votes? What's happening here?
It's elected officials who won't stand up against them. You know, some of our elected officials have been carrying that torch for a long time, I think. Frankly, at the city, Mayor Daley has been. I mean, that's just what we see. When we see, when we look at campaign finance, it's the same real estate interests, it's the same developers, it's the same bankers, it's all publicly, it's all publicly out there. And it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, both in their direct campaigns and through political committees that support them. And then when we look at the city checkbook, the same real estate interest, and they put $6,000 into a campaign. We're selling public land. We're selling public land. We're no other Realtor has an opportunity because it's a no bid contract. And they're getting hundreds of thousand dollars in Realtor fees for for doing that. You know, all of that to me is just wrong. But it's how our city has operated, you know, for for a long time. This isn't really new. So when these big projects come up, they don't lean on me because I think they they know where I stand. But we've seen real shifts, right? You mentioned Walani. And when Walani first came up, the majority of the commissioners there just at first read said, I don't like that. That doesn't sound right. I don't want to support that. And then you come back at a meeting a month later and everybody has suddenly changed their position on it. What happens behind the scenes? I can't really say exactly, but I do know that there are powerful interests in our community that lean on commissioners, they lean on on city staff. All a lot of this was really revealed during the public corruption trial of of former Commissioner Scott Maddox, who's now in prison for pay to play schemes. When powerful interests were texting him about different positions they run for, this is when he was gonna run for superintendent. He said, I got you, Reese Goode, that's our current city manager. I got you, Ben Penigree, that's the head of Blueprint right now. I got you Wayne Tetter, Assistant City Manager, and Rick Fernandez, our former city manager who left because of ethics violations. So what he was telling them was, I've already put people in place that can help deliver what you need. What we don't really have right now is a city manager or people in positions of appointed power that are really advocating for communities, right? They're, the people in their ear are these special interests. So I mean, it's a system that really excludes public participation or inviting everybody in because they can direct how agendas come out before commissioners even see it. They can put their finger on their thumb on the scale to to make a recommendation a certain way. And then, I mean, really, as elected officials, we should be the voice of the public. We're the last check and balance for accountability, but we don't have enough people that feel that way. Or they support these projects. And if you support Doak Campbell Stadium, I think you should proudly tell everybody why, but I don't see a whole lot of people in this campaign season really saying, I'm so glad I supported Doak Campbell and this is why. Because I I think they knew, frankly, they probably knew it was wrong then. They just didn't think the pressure from Florida State was worth going up against.
Ask you this quick question because rumor has it is when you get even within a football field of getting elected, you will get contacted from a lot of people with power. Well, not a lot, but you'll get contacted with people with power trying to wheel and deal with you. They would say something to the effect of like, well, if you are whatever it is you want to do, whatever's on your agenda, if you plan on being able to be successful with that, then you have to support my agenda. Has anyone ever approached you like that?
So I haven't had it that explicit, right? I've had, you know, frankly, when I first got elected, I don't think a lot of folks approached me because we we ran a campaign based on reform and and changing the system. And I think maybe they felt like they already had the votes to do what they needed to do, you know, as things progressed. I have had meetings where people said, you know, well, what is it you want? You know, what are you trying to do? You know, what do you want? Not like a quid pro quo suggestion, but just trying to figure it out. And you know, my answer has always been like, I want you guys to stop abusing the power and the tax dollars the way you are. There's not really a trade to be made. It's like, I really want you to stop wasting our money or at least come to the table and let more people come to the table and decide. So I mean, but you look at it, Mayor Daley's race, twenty three thousand dollars in booster contributions a week before the vote for Doak Campbell. That that's a huge red flag. And where we are now, all of the FSU boosters, you know, the the Board of Governors folks have set up a PCA, they're working with developers called Grow Tallahassee. They put hundreds of thousands of dollars in that. And they're running attack ads on me. You'll see them on YouTube, you'll see them on television, you'll see them in your mailbox. So maybe part of it is people are afraid because of the they'll be attacked so much for for speaking out. But you know, we're not here to we're here to do the right thing, you know, let the attacks come. We're gonna stand on the merits of of what we want to do.
Okay. Now, you've openly mentioned in a few of the forums that you were endorsing Adner Marselin for seat five. Can you explain why you decided to go with him and not your current colleague, Diane Williams Cox?
Sure. So I got to know Adner Marselin over over the last few campaigns. He had done some volunteer work and different things. I saw him doing in our community. But I mean, there there were with my current colleague, I think there were just so many votes where we couldn't see eye to eye to really put our city in the direction it needs to go, you know. I mean, top of that list to me is the city manager. We need to replace the city manager. I mean, all of the terrible decisions we've seen, everything we saw from the police response to protest to the police chief selection process. Even now, we're seeing, you know, war criminals invited to train with or be a spectator or whatever line you you may believe with with our department. To me, that that to move forward, we need to replace the city manager. And then, you know, other votes like Walani, votes like Doak Campbell Stadium, votes like, you know, not supporting a a resolution to support abortion rights. You know, there were just many many things that arose. And when Adner got in, it just seemed like, you know, his his worldview aligned more closely with mine. So I'm supporting him.
Gotcha. Okay. Now, your opponent, David Bellamy, his campaign slogan is progress that matters. What do you think he means by that?
So frankly, I think David Bellamy is trying to just do his best progressive campaign impersonation. Because during debates, he'll say, he agrees with me on everything, you know, every position I take, he he agrees with. But we're just somehow not able to to accomplish what we need to do. And if he somehow got elected, he he would be able to. But the truth is, he's very much aligned with John Daley, who has been an obstacle to progress. A hundred, he's raised over three hundred thousand dollars from special interests into his campaign. He's working with Scott Maddox related donors and consultants. Like when you put all that together, I don't believe him. He's not going to be able, a progressive voice for change. He's not going to be able to do what needs to be done to advocate for people living in poverty and the investments that we need. So I mean, I think he would like to say that we are some sort of divisive force or he always asked me if I'm angry or if I'm mad or mean. And it's like, a lot of people, a lot of people in our community have never been told no before. They've never been told that there's other voices that they need to listen to. And when their power gets challenged, it it makes them upset. And they project that maybe on me, like I'm angry. So I mean, it's hard conversations we have. If we're really serious about addressing these issues, it's not going to come easy. Hard decisions will have to be made. You know, my David Bellamy said he didn't think any dollars would have to be redirected or changed to address poverty. And to me, that's that's insane. Of course, if we want the needle to move, it's going to take dollars.
Okay. Well, Christian Dozier is, you know, she currently holds the seat for District District Commission, I'm sorry, District Three?
District Five.
District Five, sorry, yeah. They're running together. I've been talking to everybody. So she holds the commissioner's seat for the county commissioner. That's what I was trying to think of for District Five. And feels that she can contribute more at the city commission. What are your thoughts of having her to come on board? Do you think she'll help advance your, the things that you guys are looking to do or she'll take away?
Well, I I mean, I think there's pros and cons of every candidate that's in the race. I would say the the best thing we can do to move Tallahassee in a positive direction is replace Mayor John Daley. The way he operates, the way he doesn't listen to feedback, the interests that he represents, I think have been very bad. Probably for our community at large. I'm have a decent friendship with Commissioner Dozier as well as Hubba Bubba as well. I think both of them bring different things to the table. Kristen and I don't see eye to eye on everything, you know, we we have different viewpoints on on a lot of different things. But I will say with Commissioner Dozier, she she listens, right? She she is thoughtful. She weighs both sides. And she makes the best decision based on, I believe, what she feel is the right thing to do. And that may sound like a small thing, but in politics, that's a huge thing to to try to make the best decision based on all of the information given to you. So I I do think she would be a step in the right direction to to move it away. I mean, we've we've gone so, there's been such a huge right wing shift under Mayor Daley that our community has never really seen before. So I mean, it's a little bit of course correction, just getting back maybe where we have been in the past, but.
Okay. And so I also want to ask, because you did mention Hubba Bubba. And there's also Michael Abraham that are currently running. Now, they don't have experience running, excuse me, serving in the seat like Christian has, Kristen has. And one of the things that Michael Abraham specifically, who is also running for mayor, mentioned was when things get challenging at the commission meetings, that he would just go live. What are your thoughts on that? Why is that something that you guys already don't do? If it's something you guys can't agree, why don't you guys include the communities right then and there?
Yeah, so taking a step back on that, I I think the larger issue is so many of these issues, the first time the public has an opportunity to weigh in is the same day that the decision is being made. And there's only one week's notice. What I've always advocated before is why aren't we having public town halls in advance of the actual city commission meeting? If we're going to do something so major, police station locations, Doak Campbell Stadium, you know, these major eighty million dollar investments, invite the public first. There's no reason, there should only be one week's notice. Say, hey, this is something we're going to be considering three months from now. We're gonna have a public forum today where we can all hear, hear, hear your feedback. But but I don't think my personal viewpoint is there's a lot of folks serving in office right now who who don't want to include the public opinion. Their mind, you know, has already been made up. We've seen that on a lot of decisions to where it's not necessarily to them. It's it's a feature of the one week notice. If you can get it done before everybody, you know, knows about it, you won't have so many people coming out to complain. That's kind of what happened. I think with Doak Campbell, that first week, we had three public speakers on the first vote. And then by the second post, we had like sixty and they were all against because people figured it out. So I think it's just making sure the public's informed of big decisions well in advance and listening to them first before it even gets to a city commission meeting.
So what can you do or and as well as the other city commissioners do so that we are aware and you guys can give notice sooner than a week? What can be done?
Yeah, so I mean, the the city commission as a whole can change the way it operates. You know, right now, this is what's laid out from the elected body as what the 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 city commission ultimately controls the whole process. You know, if they wanted to see the agenda out for two weeks or a month or a pre, a preliminary agenda for what's coming in the next three months. There's a, there's a million different ways. The city commission could direct the city manager to provide information, as well as when we learn about it in our individual capacities. You know, we can do our own individual forums. We do our own Facebook posts or emails or we contact people in an area that might be affected and let let them know it's coming. And and you know, that works when your elected officials are getting information ahead of time. But that's also not always the case. Sometimes we don't find out about it. That is the city manager may be working on something until the week before the meeting as well. And then it's a scramble to let the public know what's happening.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, that's important to know. Thank you. I want to ask you, because you are a business owner here in the community. What are your plans for economic development if you reelected into the seat?
Sure. So I our biggest opportunity from the Blueprint Sales Tax, the Penny Sales Tax, twelve percent is directed to economic development. There's still some money left over in that pot. I can't quote it exactly, but 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 there's money there. I think really what we need to see is investment directly into programs that help small businesses, minority businesses, low income businesses, get their foot in the door. When I opened Game Street Pies, I had like three thousand dollars to my name. We borrowed, had a bunch of bad credit deals to get restaurant equipment. But we almost didn't get open because we permitting, the permitting process was so difficult and things got, you know, really expensive. And at the time, the CRA had a ten thousand dollar loan program where you didn't need the credit score you would need at a bank, where you didn't need the same type of collateral you would need at a traditional bank. And because that existed, we were able to get our doors open. But I think those types of loan and grant programs for small businesses can be really beneficial. We always say you could have given two thousand grants for the cost of Doak Campbell Stadium to businesses and communities. You could have done loans, but grants would have had the same impact, except it would have created a lot more jobs, increased the amount of people who had access to money and really grew wealth in our community rather than going to to Doak Campbell Stadium. So I think, you know, those types of programs directly focused on individuals and workforce training, moving away from this idea that we should spend all of our money recruiting large corporations to come to the airport or or to to here who frankly, they're going to come anyway if the if the the money makes sense to them. I don't think there's really economic incentives you can give to a large corporation that isn't really being driven by, they need to be in that area because that's where the, like Amazon, they need to be here because that's where their customers are. It's not the other way around where we need to recruit them. We have the population center, right? So I think just focusing our economic development dollars, you know, at at the neighborhood level, you know, and the neighborhoods who who are trying to create jobs, you know, we're trying to help build a grocery store on Alabama Street. Blueprint did fund the acquisition of that property. There's so many small scale things like that that I think could go a long way.
Okay, thank you. So for those small businesses that are are watching and would be curious, can you talk a little bit about what they would need to do to access some of that little bit of funding that's left?
Yeah, sure. So your city and county commissioners, at the end of each blueprint meeting, any commissioner can bring up an idea of how they'd like to see future dollars be spent. You know, generally, it should be through a laid out pro- process. But what we, again, when I talk about jumping the line, we keep seeing people jump the line. So I do think there's a sense of urgency to to move other programs first. So I mean, small businesses can present individual proposals to Blueprint, as well as the CRA, if they live within the, or their businesses in the CRA district to receive funding. They can also advocate for defined programs, define, you know, let's put five million dollars in a small grant program and have certain criteria or a small loan program and and have certain criteria. But I mean, I just think it it starts with an idea or the need and then getting the political will behind it.
Okay. I have a question, or obviously have a question, but my question to you is, do you think at the city level that you guys oftentimes overpay for things?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And so when that happens, what what is the idea behind that?
Well, I I I mean, I think it's different. You know, we've seen contracts and different bids go out where you know, ideally, public dollars, you're going to the lowest cost that actually can service the need, right? I mean, there's everybody who's ever bought something, you can buy something high quality, you can buy something low quality. There's kind of a sliding scale of how much money you you should spend on it. So for for our larger procurements, there is generally a process where each vendor would submit a proposal and then a scoring committee would use different metrics to identify different rankings and then the top one would get recommended. I've seen sometimes I think where we are overpaying for things. I've seen contracts get renegotiated ahead of time that probably shouldn't be. And then, you know, I think, I wouldn't say we're paying, overpaying for everything we buy. But I think, you know, opening up the door to smaller vendors to come in, encouraging smaller companies to be part of the procurement process and get their bids in and helping facilitate how they can bid on public contracts. I think all of that can save the city money.
Okay. So as we're winding down to the last leg of the interview, I'd like to ask you some pretty direct questions and where you have, you know, no more than thirty seconds to respond. But they're, you know, more about you as a politician and the things that you stand for. So with that said, I'll go into the first one. Are you, would you say that you are pro-choice or no?
I'm pro-choice.
You are pro-choice. Okay. And then for the independent ethics laws in that at the city level, well, really for the whole, is it, is it one just independent ethic law that applies to everyone for the city and the county or?
Yeah, the city has its own independent board, yeah. Yeah, the city has its own independent board. Yeah.
Okay. So for the independent ethics board at the city level, how would you rate its effectiveness on a scale of one to 10?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, I'd probably say a six and I, I would say that it's not any fault of their own. It's just the amount of authority they've been given to review certain things. So they've asked for expanded authority to help oversee lobbying and lobbyists. I think, you know, giving them a little more authority and a little expanding their scope could help them be more effective.
Okay. On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate our governor, our state's governor?
Zero.
The number of times I've heard that answer. That's funny. Okay. And then on a scale of one to 10, how would you rate our police chief?
Um, three.
Three. Okay. And then on a scale of one to 10, how would you rate our city manager?
One point four because that's the grade I gave him on his review.
Did you? Okay, okay. And so the idea of defunding the police, there's a lot of people in our community, especially among the millennial generation that, that wants to promote the idea of defunding the police. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't think we're going to cut a police budget on day one, but I think when we hear what people are saying, they want to see a, a real increase in funding for human services. You know, I've been a strong advocate for that, you know, we've been told by our human services providers that eight million dollars annually can help us eliminate chronically homeless and veteran homeless populations. We know the need for food insecurity. We know the need for mental health services. We know the need to different types of responses that aren't law enforcement based on different things that are happening in, in our community because so many things that law enforcement responds to probably doesn't require an officer with a gun. So I, I think to me, first step is investing heavily in those human services and I think we can get there. And then if that reduces the need for law enforcement funding in the long run, that would be great.
Okay. So I want to ask about the donors to your campaign. Can you tell us who the, some of the largest ones were?
The largest donors? So my campaign, we've had thousands of individual small dollar contributions. I think maybe a dozen of them have been the maximum contribution of a thousand dollars. Whereas our opponent has gotten hundreds and hundreds of thousand dollar contributions and they're from different companies. They're from LLCs. They're from the same people who own ten companies that can give a thousand dollars each. Our largest contributors are from former elected officials, County Commissioner Bob Radcliffe, local author Jeff Vandermeer. They're all from individual people. They're not from companies and they're not from people who have business before the city.
Okay. And so I want to ask about. Oh, I've asked all the questions. Yeah, we got it all. And good timing. Yay. So I just want to give you an opportunity to appeal to the community, just to let everyone know about your campaign, any messages that you want to share. Of course, identify again who you are. It is on the screen actually for those tuning in, but, but you know, just give them a little bit about what you're doing, what your mission is. Oh, sorry. I do have one last question. This question is, how do you see if re-elected, what do you see for Tallahassee? What, what is something that you're looking to see different from what we're seeing today? That will improve us?
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, I think I would like to see a new city manager and us to look at our budget from top to bottom and readdress what our priorities are and how we're spending money. I'd like to see us invest in neighborhoods that need help. I'd like to see us invest in homeless services. I'd like to see us bring broadband internet service, high-speed service to every neighborhood in our, in our city. And, and I like to see us really focus on economic growth that empowers people who live here and helps us keep local money and local hands. So I think that just a huge shift from where we are focused on the people at the top to more everyday people.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. I really appreciate you being here. So yeah, so it's your time. I'm going to give you the stage so that you can talk to the community. And again, I appreciate your time this evening.
Sure. Okay. So I, once again, I'm City Commissioner Jeremy Matlow. And we have an election coming up August twenty-third. Early voting starts on August thirteenth. Generally, people consider this the primary election, but in local government, our seats are nonpartisan. So my race will be decided on August twenty-third. This race does not go till November and there are several other local races that could be decided in August as well. You don't need to be registered as a Democrat to vote in August. No party affiliation or any party, you can vote in all, all city races. And frankly, just as a plea, we, we need your help. We need people to turn out. Our opponents are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars running very negative campaigns with, with big, from big right wing donors. You know, my, my opponent supported Governor DeSantis. He supported Matt Gaetz and he's kind of tried to walk back that support, but that's really not what we need to see. Our, the direction we need to see our city going in. So if you believe that we can make Tallahassee better, working together, that we can actually address some of the most pressing concerns that we've seen in our community for decades. This is the election. I believe that we can do it. This is the election that enough people can be elected who want to push for, for positive change. So you can volunteer on our campaign. You can sign up at jeremymatlow.com. There's other campaigns you can volunteer on or help with, reach out. If you can knock doors, make calls, send text, text messages for the next couple of weeks. This is very critical that we get people to know that how important the August elections are. So once again, I'm Jeremy Matlow. Thank you for having this conversation and I look forward to serving you all for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. And I also encourage you to leave your contact information in the comments so that those coming later, we have two more sessions with them, other groups. So if they come later, they can still see your information and follow up and reach out to you should they need to. But thank you. Are you coming to the millennial mingle on Thursday?
Yeah, I'll stop by. Absolutely.
Okay, awesome. Can I count on you to help spread the news? Can you share the flyer?
I can do that. Sure.
Yeah. All right. Thanks so much. I really appreciate your time. Thank you for being here and I wish you a great night and a great campaign.
Awesome. Thank you for having me.
My pleasure. Bye. All right, guys. So that wraps up the first part of this evening's forum. We're going to talk to two other sectors. The next one is going to be city commission seat five as well as county commission district three. So we kind of got a full house today, but I did keep it within the same timeframe. So I won't take too much time because I, I do want to be able to give everyone their fair chance to address the community and get their concerns recognized and heard. So I'm just going to go ahead and show you all a message from our sponsors and supporters and we'll jump right back in. Thanks for, thanks for tuning in.
The other side said we're too radical because we believe everybody should have access to healthcare.
Because we think one job should be enough to pay your bills. Because no one's future should be determined by a zip code.
We're called too radical because
We don't want to be shot dead by police.
Because we believe making a profit out of caging people is wrong.
We're too radical because we want our public schools funded.
Because we want to learn our true history.
They call us radical because we think voting is a basic human right.
Because we were born to immigrant parents.
Because we are immigrants.
They say we're too radical because
We want an end to war.
We want to be safe.
Because we want to be free.
And if one basic rights makes us too radical.
I'll be there.
I hope you all have been enjoying us this week. If you have questions, all their contact information is on our pages. I hope you all are following them. If you're not, please follow us at Community Builders three sixty. We're also on Twitter at C O M M Builders, so COM Builders on Twitter. So stay engaged. We host events. We are a corporate event planning company. So we are not politically driven. I know we're hosting a candidate forum, so it may seem like we're just, just entwined in a political space, but we're just, we're comfortable having these serious conversations, especially in places where there is a gap and no one else is. We are a group of millennials, so we definitely wanted to bring the information to our peers because we take almost fifty percent of the entire registered voters in Tallahassee, believe it or not. So Tallahassee has a little bit, maybe like two hundred and two thousand registered voters. And so almost a hundred thousand, if not a little bit more than that, is made up of both millennials and Gen Z'ers. But a bigger part of that portion is the millennials. So although we seem to be distant, it's, it's refreshing to know that we do take the political process serious and we are making our voices heard. So pat on your back for that, pat on your back for that. So let's get the show going. Again, thanks for tuning in. I do want to recognize Dream Defenders. They are a sponsor for this evening's forum as well as this week's forum. So I want to recommend or recognize them. If you feel that you have a drive to be more engaged in the community, to be more involved with the affairs that are happening down at City Hall, Dream Defenders is a great place to participate in that. They do different exercises to teach people how to be informed. So you don't want to, you know, sit on the background when you can be out in the community of being a major player and Dream Defenders definitely is one of them. So thank you, Dream Defenders for that. And I also want to mention real quick before I bring our next candidates on for tomorrow's Millennium Mingle. Finally, guys, finally, finally, there is something, there's all these organizations that's doing something for the young crowd, the grown folk, so we speak twenty-five and up crowd, but for the professionals who have, who likes to protect their soul, where do we go? Millennial Community Builders has now offered a space for us to go for those professionals looking for a safe space to come and have fun, to mingle, to network. We can eat, you can drink, you can have, you know, you'll hear good music. We'll also have interactive games, making it easy to meet new people. So we'll be at the Signature Lounge. Our very first interactive event is this Thursday. The doors open at seven o'clock. We'll have prize giveaways. We'll have different activities and we've invited the candidates to come to network as well. So there's all kinds of opportunity that will be at these functions and I'm very happy to be the host of that. And so I hope to see you all there. Please check our website, www buildingstrongcommunities.net for more information. Now with that super long intro, let's get into it because we get to speak with the city commissioners or the candidates and the current seat holder for city commission seat five. And so I'm going to go ahead and introduce them, go ahead and bring them on the screen. Joining us this evening is Mr. Adner Marslin. Hello, Adner.
Hello, hello. How are you?
Doing good. Ms. Shelby Green.
Hi. Thank you guys so much for having this. How you doing?
My pleasure. It's my pleasure. I'm doing good. Thanks for being here. And last but not least, the current incumbent and seat holder of the city commissioner seat for seat five, I always confuse seat in district, seat five, is Ms. Diane Williams Cox.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. So perfect attendance, guys. This is everyone who is running for this seat and is going to be on your ballot. So let's go ahead and jump right into it because I only allotted an hour for this. I tried to make it fair depending on how many people was in that sector. Would depend how much time we have for it. So we have a lot of good things that we want to talk about. So let's just jump right on in. Before, I want to be fair though to you all for, and thank you for being here. I want to give you all an opportunity to, to speak to the community, say who you are and why you decided to run. I'm just going to ask that you limit it to one minute. I have a timer going, but I trust you. I don't want you to feel pressured. So but if I pull you back, that's just indicating that you kind of got to wrap it up. I also want to let you know that if you see me do the church finger, also to indicate to you that thank you for your answer and please wrap up your point. You don't have to stop abruptly, but let's bring it to a close. Any questions? No? Good. All right. So Adner, I'll let you go first and you can just talk to the community, say who you are and why you decided to run in this election.
Don't put me in a bad position, but um, thank you so very much Regina for throwing this event. My name is Adner Marslin and I am running to serve you all as your next city commissioner for seat five. I think as we look at our community and the status of where things are, many of us are asking for change. We want to make sure that it is our voice that is in the room and not the voice of the major developers and the special and the wealthy interest in this community. There are a lot of things and needs like affordable housing, safer streets that need to be addressed and need to be prioritized. And the people are asking for a voice to make sure that when they ask for something, that it is done. And so I am running because I would like to be a representative voice for our entire community and for mothers like the one who spoke out at the Doak Campbell Stadium that asking every day for its city to provide itself with an opportunity. I am running to make sure that she has that opportunity to thrive in this city and so that everyone can achieve the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Shelby?
Yeah. Well, thanks Regina so much for having this forum and allowing candidates to speak and share their vision for Tallahassee. So hi, everyone. My name is Shelby Green. So hi, everyone. My name is Shelby Green, and I'm also running for Tallahassee City Commission Seat Five. Before I decided to run, I actually used to serve as Leon County's Soil and Water Supervisor. One of the issues I care a lot about is our water quality. And having a background in engineering and software, I worked with our FAMU FSU College of Engineering to start a pilot program to test water quality in our community and also track pollution hotspots in our area so we can better target resources. So I care a lot about making sure that we are prioritizing the needs and the will of the people, which is clean water, safe streets, access to reliable transportation, affordable utilities, affordable housing, and making sure that we are also measuring progress on those priorities, making sure that we're not just talking about it, we are actually doing it. And the way we do that is by measuring progress through data. So I'm running to represent your will, to serve your interests, and also to make Tallahassee a more connected and modern place for everyone. There's a lot of opportunity and resources here, but we need to work as a community to realize those opportunities and make sure everyone has access to financial stability as well as opportunity.
Thank you. And just so y'all know, I'm RJ.
My bad.
No, it's okay. And last but not least, Ms. Diane Williams Cox, please.
Thank you, RJ, for this opportunity to come and address our citizens. I am Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, and I ran for, for this position after working in our community for thirty-plus years. Yes, I am the mother of some millenniums and beyond, and I've worked in this community not only with my young, with my young me and my three sons, but their friends and their families. And what I saw happening in our community, the need of voice to go in the room where decisions were being made. So I decided to run, after the encouragement of many in the community, to go into the rooms and be that voice. And that's what I've done in my three and a half years here in the, on the, on the commission. And I'm very proud of the record that I have, of the things that we've been able to accomplish in communities that in the past, these things did not happen. And I'm looking to continue to move us in the right direction, to trend us in a, in a direction that's continuing to move our city forward, to have an impact on poverty, which includes a reduction in crime and gun violence, along with housing, affordable housing, and the creation of jobs and economic development. I think, thank you again for this opportunity to speak to the audience.
The pleasure is mine. Thank you all again for being here. And so this record, that's what we're gonna talk about today because I've done enough interviews with everyone else, and so many of the opponents have, you know, said, well, I respect the incumbent, I appreciate what they're doing, but it's just time that they pass on the, the baton, and it's time that we kind of switch the speed a little bit. But not in this race. This race has been very different. Both Adner and Shelby has been very vocal about just the things that they do not approve of in your particular record. So we're just gonna have to, you know, kind of figure out, figure out the details here. I'm the referee, okay? So we gonna, we gonna keep it peaceful.
Absolutely.
The people want to know. The people want to know. Alright, so I guess I want to first start off just asking Adner, first, if you can kind of talk to us about some of the things that you see and what ways you feel like you can improve them? Just maybe, whatever specific, let's just say you're, when you, soon as you get in office, the very first thing that you would work on, what would be that first thing?
I think the first thing that we need to address as a city is economic development. I think we need to create opportunities for economic development for everyday people and not just our special interests and our developer friends. When the city has an opportunity to distribute dollars, public dollars at that, they should go to the public benefit and not for private profit. And what I mean is that we have to talk about Doak. I know people want to move on from this one vote, and I've even had people say that sometimes I, 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 I'm just blown by it, but the comment was, "The majority can't be right all the time. Sometimes the minority is right." I'm like, in what world? One thing that we must always remember in this race is that none of us can get in that seat and be the City Commissioner without the majority vote of the people. And that's just a reminder that we must always carry the majority interest of the people into this seat. And so my issue that I would tackle on day one would be economic development to bring jobs into the city. But that can only be done with our economic dollars, and we have to become more fiscally responsible to make sure that when we're allocating funds out of City Hall into the community, that it serves the general benefit of it. Not just a small job-producing benefit such as stadium upgrades. There's a lot of small businesses and medium-sized businesses that depended on that money to grow, and it is no longer here. And so it's not only what we have given away, but it's also what will no longer be. And so I believe that we need to make sure that we strengthen economic development to provide, to address poverty and provide great economic development to our community. That would be my first initiative.
Okay, Shelby, how about you? What would be your first thing that you would address?
And RJ, I really like this question. The very first issue that I would address is affordable utilities. And that would be by continuing the work that I did last summer to try to advocate for a difference in our energy policy. Right now, we are experiencing high utility rates because of rising fuel costs. We are experiencing high utility rates because more people are staying at home, so there's more demand. And then we're also experiencing high utility rates because of crisis in Ukraine. So right now, the city of Tallahassee's utilities rates are actually locked in right now, but that will change as time progresses. So I'd like to see us do a better job of tracking the people who cannot afford to pay their utility bill chronically, activating resources to help them afford to pay their utility bill, whether it is by weatherizing their homes or by taking assistance to help them pay their utility bill, and then also investing into insulation and improvements on their roof so they can afford to put solar on their roof. I really care about making sure people can afford to pay their most basic necessity, which is their utility bill, and we can do that. The city owns its own utility system. We create and design our own rate structure. We are able to tap into resources from the federal government through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. We need a commission that is activating all of the resources that we have in our community and using that to target places of struggle. One of the really big issues that we see, especially into, in the three-two-three-zero-four zip code, is energy and utility burden. So one of the things I really care about is tracking our problems, activating resources, and I would do that wholeheartedly first with ensuring everyone can afford to pay their utility bill.
Wow, that's different. I haven't heard that as the first thing that someone would work on. So can you elaborate a little bit more of what access do you have or what information you have that, the advantage, I guess, that you have that you can actually be effective in this? And we can know that you're not being pulled into a project that's gonna take up so much of your time that you can't help in other areas?
Right, so actually during the summer, where I started with this work was when the city ended its utility moratorium, I requested a list from the city of all the people who couldn't afford to pay their utility bill. So that's the first step the city can take, is having an actual map of who are the people who cannot afford to pay their most basic bill. That's the first step. And the second step is then to say, "We have Project Share. Let's make sure all of our residents know that they can apply for funding through Project Share." When I asked the city to print disconnection dates and relief funds on the utility bill, they said that would be too expensive. So finding out different ways to make sure we are communicating existing resources in our community, not just Project Share, but we also have a capital action agency that provides weatherization funds through a program to help residents insulate their homes and reduce their utility bill. So there are already existing resources in our community. The issue is that residents do not know that these resources exist, and the community is not, or the city is not doing a good enough job to communicate what's already here. So the first step is identifying the people who need these resources. The second step is communicating these resources to the people. And then the third step is figuring out how can we activate funding from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act? And how can we activate funding from other resources? So as we are transitioning to solar energy, making sure the people who need the benefit the most are getting it.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Cox, I mean, these are your opponents. What are your thoughts when they are saying stuff like this? I do want to ask you about what agendas do you have currently on your desk? But I am curious to know, when you have opponents that talk about these things, how realistic are they to you?
Well, let me just share that before I came to the commission, I had some of those same concerns. But what you learn, once you come to the commission, you learn how things are actually put together, how things actually work, and how you have to work with others to get your goals accomplished. Nothing happens without a majority vote. And you have to understand how budgets are put together. You got, you have to understand where funding comes from, what programs do exist, what things are already in place to do some of these things. We have a wonderful customer service operation that works with individuals. And one of the things that we must remember is that we were the, the first to stop disconnections during the pandemic. And, but we were the last ones in the state to begin it again. And we, we, we did give notice on when that was gonna happen, and we provided a concierge service for anyone who needed, still needed assistance. Even now, we are still working with individuals. So when I hear these things, I understand the concern. I understand where it's coming from. And what that says to me is that we need to inform my opponents even more so of what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it. I believe that we are accomplishing the, the, the things that they're saying. One of, one of the issues that, you know, Mr. Marslin mentioned is that the city of Tallahassee did not give Doak Campbell Stadium anything. That money came from Blueprint. We have three diff, at least three different budgets that funding comes from. The city budget, the CRA budget, and Blueprint. And so we have to look at those different buckets and understand what law says that we can do with any of those. And we must follow the law. We must follow the statutes. We have a city attorney who keeps us legal. We have an inspector general who makes sure we're doing what we're needing to do. We have a treasurer clerk who also makes sure that our bills, that money's collected and our bills are being paid. We have a city manager who has the majority of the staff who actually run the city because we're a council management-type government. We do not have a strong mayor. We are, the mayor's vote is equal to the commission, commissioners' vote. And so we, we rely on information that is provided by that, those, that professional staff. I do my own research. I talk to people in the community. I've worked in this community for thirty years. I've had utility bills for all that, that period of time. So I understand what they're saying. But I'm trying to, try, I'm, I'm trying to communicate that things work differently once you get inside and understand how to make things move in our city in a non-disruptive manner. And so I can appreciate their concern.
Thank you. So I, I want to go back to the original question of the current needs that you have on your, your desk right now. What are some things that you're working on right now?
Absolutely. One of the things that we did when, when I first came to the commission is we, we set up a strategic plan. And I insisted that impact on poverty be a part of that strategic plan. I work every day in every way I possibly can to try to help reduce and eradicate poverty by helping people connect to what it is that they need to connect to, to be able to live from day to day. Pocketbook decisions, dinner timetable decisions, how they're gonna move about the city. Those, poverty is my number one issue. And it seems that out of that flows all, a lot of the issues of life, crime, the, the lack of jobs, the lack of training. So what I've been doing is promoting and supporting those things that will allow folks to come out of poverty, job creation, economic development, doing the kind of things that we need to make sure, you know, Amazon coming to town. You know, we talk about the money that, that was awarded to Doak, but we're, we're, we're forgetting that we gave Amazon money to come to town. We gave Dan Foss money to expand. We gave money to Florida A&amp;M so that we could bring those economic dollars to town. We gave money to TCC so that they could expand, so that we could bring tournaments and things. It's about bringing dollars to Tallahassee so that people can get jobs, so that we can help them with housing and be able to, allow them to be able to come out of poverty.
Okay. Alright, so guys, bear with me because since Diane is the, she's the incumbent, we kind of need to first figure out the state of the current position before we can actually engage in conversation with y'all, so bear with me. So Ms. Cox, you mentioned a few things, but specifically for, I want to kind of keep it in order here. So you mentioned whenever things come to the table at the meetings. It's been noted that you all don't often have a lot of time to make decisions whenever something is coming, especially when it's budget-related. And specifically, it was said for like a week's notice that you guys might have, and that's might, that's maybe on a good occasion. So how much research are you really able to do to make a decision? Or what type of research, rather, are you doing in that week's time? If that, if that is the, the real amount of time that y'all got, you guys get?
That is not correct. I have a working relationship with all of my appointed officials. I meet with them regularly. I take my briefings. I know what's coming down the line. And so when I'm, I'm talking with them about what is, you know, what's on the agenda, what is to come, what's coming in the future, I'm aware of those things so that I can help provide input to inform, to, to make an informed decision. I do have opportunities to do my review. The agenda comes out to the public a week in advance because that's, that's standard. But I'm not sitting around waiting for the agenda to come out to know what it is that's gonna be on the agenda. I have a working relationship so that I can meet with, I meet with my appointed officials, some of them every week, some of them bi-weekly, so that I know what's coming down. And I, I'm a trained IT manager, and I, I know how to gather information to be able to make my decisions. So I do have time to do research. And, and so when I'm coming, when I come to the desk, I've already done my homework. I've already gathered input so that I can then make decisions because what people need are decisions being made. And they need decisions now, not, not for us to talk them to ad nauseam, but to be able to make those decisions. So because of the working relationship that I have, and because of the work that I do, I'm able to do that research and have time to be able to bring it and get my questions answered before I get out front.
So how much notice would you say you get whenever you're, whenever something comes to the table?
It depends on what the issue is. Now, of course, you got to live in the moment because sometimes things happen in the meeting that you're not aware of. But I, you know, I, I can't say that I get a month's notice. I can't say that I get a, it just depends on how big the issue is, how long it's being worked on, and where we're going. For the budget, for instance, we have several opportunities to, to react and see the budget. We also bring it to the community. By law, we have to. The last time we talked about the budget, it was my request that we go to the community with the budget so that people could come. And we had that meeting at Smith Williams, so folks could come and, and, and be informed and, and also to speak on the budget. So there, and, and I was also the one who said that we needed to take our commission meetings to the community, and we've done that. We made it Hartsfield Elementary, we made it Gilchrist Elementary, we even made it Smith Williams. So it is important to me that my neighbors have an opportunity to not have to come and park and climb up the hill to get to City Hall, but they can walk and, and be able to come to these meetings. So those, that's what I'm trying to make sure happen. So as far as how much notice I get, it depends on the size of what is coming.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so that actually, that's actually good. I wanted to get that to a stopping point because I forgot I also have to watch the clock. This isn't where we get to speak for two hours like in some of our other forums, so.
But I would love to have that opportunity, should you have the time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that invite. Okay, so Adner, I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that, Ms. Cox said she was proud of her record. So her record really has shown her wanting to basically stimulate economic development. Even though a lot of the things she's voted for were big projects, she has shown that she's been trying. And what I would understand that is, that's her perspective of stimulating our economic development. But from what I see in a lot of our, and a lot of the conversations that you guys have had previously, you seem to disagree with that. So can you explain your stance of why you don't see her being, her decisions actually helping our community?
Absolutely. I think facts are important, and I think that we have to really just call it for what it is. Let's first go back and just address some of the things that was previously mentioned. Let's start with Doak Campbell State, Doak Campbell Vote. It was a terrible, terrible decision that will have implications for years to come. And I'm pretty sure every single incumbent wants this issue to go away because it's impacting this election as quick as it is. But first, let's talk about Blueprint. Blueprint is an organization that is comprised of city commissioners and county commissioners. So when I say the city, they all have an equal vote in that. And yes, I understand the collective body voted for this particular measure, but the city played a very critical role in that. And uh what we know now is that seventy-one percent of residents in Tallahassee disagreed with the Doak Campbell Vote. And I heard uh our commissioner say, you know, that uh she ran to be the voice. She wants to make sure that our neighbors are at the table, we moving City Hall. But what's the point of moving City Hall meetings out to the community if, when the community comes in massive numbers and ask you not to vote for a particular project, that we ignore the massive voice of the community and do what we want? Again, I think that that is um very, very clear for what we need to do. Uh the second thing um that I want to address uh that the commissioner mentioned is uh the proper usage and the restrictions of such dollars. And um I wanted to be very clear to say this. You know, when you um have a budget, right? You can restructure items such as the Doak vote was, the, the purpose of those dollars that was used for Blueprint was for economic development. That could have went to create jobs, that could have went to make sure that smaller businesses had micro grants available to become medium-sized businesses. That money could have been used to attract the well-paying, quality jobs that could have given us livable, livable and affordable wages to come into our community. We could have used that as bargaining dollars to bring those businesses such as Amazon. Um which I would mention the stark difference between Amazon and Doak uh Doak Campbell's investment is that Amazon provides thousands of jobs into our community where this Doak vote will only possibly provide up to forty-five based on what the number said. So at the end of the day, there's a, there's a stark difference on those matters. Now, the other thing about it is, let's talk about the FAMU and the FSU um dollars. Because I think this is what the confusion has been. When you look at the dollars for FAMU, that was to protect economic development based on the basis that if FAMU did not get those dollars, it would, the, the, the football season was in jeopardy of even happening here in this community. And okay, while we can understand that at the ten million mark, FSU had a fully functional stadium. Let, let's make no mistake, and as they would love to say, those funds were earmarked anyway to go to a conference center that, well, convention center that would have benefited the entire community. However, it went now to luxury stadium seats that many of us would not get. And there were many concessions, remember? This, this vote and how it happened, they didn't line item this vote. They made sure that this vote was a collective, all or nothing. And it's that reason that many of us are upset at our current commissioners. Because when the community begged you to go line item by line item, that's not what you did. When you had that opportunity, we all voted to make it a all-packaged deal that had many critical projects that impacted Tallahassee. And so if you wanna talk about cordiality and doing it in a way where it wasn't disruptive, that was your opportunity to say, okay, well, let's go ahead and approve these projects right here and take our time with Doak so that the community can have a more time to have input and digest it. Now that's on the record, go watch the meetings yourself. Um but one of the other things that I will also say is that we all have played with budgets. Let me tell you something. It, when there are restricted items in a budget, all you have to simply do is take those restricted items and put them to meet other sections of our budget within the city. So Blueprint could have helped supplemented some of the things that our city budget goes to cover. And at the end of the day, we could have taken those funds to get and prioritize things like sidewalks and projects from the city's fund to move those things forward. So we're not suggesting a misuse of funds from Blueprint. What we're suggesting is prioritizing the needs of this community and being fiscally responsible. And I think those are some very important um key points that we need to make sure that we differentiate. And then I think that when we do things um such as um, um the incumbent's paid staffer, uh Mr. Beasley put out a publication that suggested that it came from Black Voters Matter and it's a voter's guide. And this voter's guide was intended to say that it was a voice from the community. In fact, the incumbent posted it on her Facebook page. But when it was brought to their attention that Black Voters Matter could not endorse and did not put such ad out, quickly they went back on the website and snatched Black Voters Matter name off of the publication, but failed to identify where that publication come from. Yet our opponent went on her website and clearly told the community that this was an informative guide. And features it was, this was not something that was open to all candidates. It was just something that politically, those candidates that the um incumbent's campaign consultant is working for are featured on, but it's put out there. And so I think if you're gonna be fair, you should just go out there and put information out there for what it is. And say, I, Mr. Steve Beasley, am putting this guide out and I believe and support these candidates. So when people read that, they also have the opportunity to know that he's on your paid campaign staff and that this represents those issues. And it's this type of politics that the young people feel sets us back. It's misleading. And so I would like to see our city progress where we take in the voice of our community. Because the first part in being the city commissioner, and you may not know it all and you'll learn things as you get there along the way, but the first thing that everybody knows is this starts with listening to, to the people because it is the people that place you in that seat. It is the people that can keep you in that seat. And when they are not happy, it is the people that can also vote you out of that seat. And so I um, my, my, my aspects of this is that, you know, that vote for Doak Campbell really shook people to the core because it al- also represents what we have been asking for the city commission. And to wrap it up, you know, we have asked the city commission for progress. Yes, there's a lot of things that we hear that are in the pipeline, but right now the people need real action. I went to the community and said, hey, we put tons of money in Bond, tons of money in Frenchtown. And the community response that I've gotten when I knocked on the door is where is it? Cuz we don't see it. And so we have to be realistic to make sure that we're not just addressing ballpark numbers, but let's realistically point out specific projects that are making the community better. Thank you.
RJ, if I could just, if I could just.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I, and if you can just do me a favor, kind of jot down your point because I wanna kinda add Shelby in this conversation uh because she's running as well. So she can't possibly see or can't be pleased with the work that's currently uh being held here. So I'd like to know her thoughts in addition to what Adna has said, and then I'll let you respond, Ms.
Regina, if I may just to make a quick point of order, I noticed that you characterize it as Attorney Adna Marsland, but I am a firm administrator at Mr. Crump's office. Just wanna make sure we correct that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
RJ, thanks for bringing me into the conversation. I, the points that Adna were bringing up, especially when it comes to Doak Stadium, is that there is a reoccurring theme here, which is we have elected officials who get into office promising change to the people, and then they fail to deliver it because they are beholden by powerful institutions here that not only maintain control of our city commissioners and yields political influence onto them, but they also maintain control of the market. So we have small businesses here that are not able to enter the market because they don't have access to resources. We have people here who want to be able to have more opportunity and reach their potential, but they're not able to because they don't know where the opportunity is and they don't know where resources are. So going back to Commissioner Williams-Cox's statement that the city res- responded to the utilities connection situation by giving concierge surge- service. Where was the concierge service when they didn't even print information about debt relief onto the newsletters or onto utility bills? We had people who were struggling, people who were already in poverty, people who were already struggling throughout the pandemic that now cannot afford to pay the debt that they accrued during the pandemic and don't even receive information about something that could literally save their life and get them back on track.
Thank you. So Ms. Cox, now with both of their, you know, thoughts, and I'm sure you probably have heard this and know this as well, but for our audience, what is your take on this?
Let me just share, first of all, there, there's so much that has been said. And I have purposely, I, I choose, I'm not gonna debate the issue because everything that we have done and meetings that we've had, anyone who wants to see what we've said and done uh can feel free to review because it is documented. So let me say this. Blueprint dollars for sidewalks does not come from economic um development dollars. It comes from infrastructure dollars. Blueprint, one hundred percent of the budget, you know, there's a one hundred percent blueprint budget. Eighty-eight percent of it is infrastructure. And uh for a total of uh uh five hundred and fifteen million dollars. Only twelve percent of blueprint dollars are for economic development. So eighty-eight percent of those dollars are being used for infrastructure. Sidewalks are infrastructure. Uh there are thirty-one projects in our community from Blueprint, eighteen of them on the south side, okay? And what I have said to folks, instead of focusing, being laser-focused on one piece of the Blueprint budget, I'm encouraging uh minorities, small and women-owned businesses, get your paperwork together, get certified, be ready to bid on some of these jobs because this money is gonna be in our community. So why not get out there and earn some of it? And in, in reference to uh what the community, the neighbors, the neighborhood uh need, yes, we have awarded six point four million dollars to Bond through CRA, six point four million dollars to Frenchtown through CRA, and six point four million dollars to Griffin Heights from the city budget. And guess what? Those dollars will be spent driven by those neighborhoods using the Neighborhood First programs that they authored. We do not go into neighborhoods and tell them what they can have. We listen to what they want, and they put it in writing in a, in a, in a Neighborhood First Plan. And that's how the dollars are spent.
To make sure I'm following what you're saying, they basically come to you guys with the plan that they're gonna use the money for. So if people don't see that this stuff is being done in the community, it isn't the responsibility of the commission that they're not, that is not reflecting what they're, where that money goes, but on the people who are, who came and requested that money? Is that what you're saying?
Those neighborhoods have a committee that they've put together with subcommittees who have provided input to create the Neighborhood First Plan. And those, the Neighborhood First Plan is the plan. The city provides, the, the, the CRA or the city provides the dollars to support the projects, programs, events, and things that the neighborhood has said that they want to have happen in their neighborhood. Landscaping, uh rehabbing houses, uh uh creating a park, ev- events. They tell us.
So that's not done, is not you guys, it's that committee.
We are working with them, absolutely. We're working with them to provide the funding to do the projects that they say that they want.
Okay, I know you're shaking your head, so what do you wanna say?
Uh well, first and foremost, I would just say, uh I'm never suggested that blueprint funds were to do sidewalk projects. What I am saying is that when you properly put public funds to public use, it will eliminate or help alleviate the funds that we have to take that are city funds that will have to make our city budget. Right now, there is a two million dollar deficit in the city budget per the last budget meeting that we attended. But we just handed out a lot of money. Now, what I'm asking is, was there not an opportunity for those economic development dollars and infrastructure to be spent?
Absolutely not. That is against the law. It is illegal because blueprint dollars, uh the, the public voted for those dollars and they voted for the projects that would be had. The twelve percent economic development dollars did not have any earmarks on them. So no, we could not take blueprint dollars to supplement the city budget. We could not. That's illegal.
Let me ask a question. This is gonna go to you, Ms. Cox. So there are projects that were, and I think Adna kind of mentioned this, or they had stuff on the line items uh that was supposed to be next up, but uh oftentimes there are projects that skip. What's on, you know, what is proposed and in the order of how they're supposed to be serviced. So uh for example, there is uh the project to put sidewalks in a three-two-three-zero-four area, specifically, I think in Tharp. So that's probably not, maybe three-two-three-zero-four, but it is the Tharp area, and that was in line to get serviced. But now that's been pushed back because a lot of the funds went towards the Wolani project. Uh and so now it looks like from, according to projections, that Tharp won't get, will not be able to get the things that they need uh until about twenty forty is what it's looking like. And that's according to how uh the, the, the trajectory of how it looks now, so that could even be furthered back. So my question to you is, how is it that projects can skip like that?
Well, what happens in a blueprint meeting is uh items are put to a vote based on new, either new information or pressing information. And uh as far as Tharp is concerned, there are other uh entities that are involved be- because we have to deal with the CRTPA, which is another committee that deals with infrastructure. Uh Department of Transportation and, and regional, uh this is, is a regional committee that deals with what's happening on, on Tharp and other areas of town. But information comes to the Blueprint Committee. Uh and we make determinations, research, evaluations, and sometimes things need to be changed. Just like in any budget or any plan, you plan according to what you know at the moment. But you have to be flexible to be able to move and do what needs to be done. But I, I want to, I don't want, I'm not trying to skip the issue. What I'm trying to say here is that this is not a uh, uh easy, one-way street that these things happen. All of these things are happening at one time. I sit on five, about five different committees that make decisions regarding what happens here in this, in this city. So we, we have to look at all, look at all of these things. Some of them intersect. So we have to make sure that a decision over here won't have an impact over here. Now, the truth be told, if I, if, if, if you allow me, uh before COVID, we had forty million dollars on the line to create a convention center with FSU as a partner. The community pushed back and said, we didn't need a convention center. We listened. So we didn't do a convention center. But guess where the thirty, the ten million dollars came from for Florida A and M, that line item? Guess where the one million dollars came from for T C C, that line item? Those items were not voted on by the citizens, but because of what we needed to do to make sure that we uh kept our city moving forward, we took a vote, a very critical vote. And I'm happy to have led that to get ten million dollars for FAMU. FAMU wasn't even in the budget to be able to do that, to keep those dollars here. But there is a difference in the blueprint budget between economic development dollars and infrastructure. So we, we don't need to get those twisted and, and, and we don't need to get CRA and the city budget twisted up in this either. They each have their own definition of what can be done, and it's according to law.
So the Wolani project, what budget is that coming out of?
That's, that's part of Blueprint.
That's Blueprint dollars.
That was part of Blueprint.
Did you vote for or against that project?
I voted for that project, and let me explain to you why I voted for that project. Because for one thing, it um, it had been on the books for thirty years. And as we look at what our population, what studies say our population will be doing over the next few years, we were gonna need some space. I also voted for the expansion of the USA on the south side of town. Because if we can expand on the north side of town, surely we ought to be able to expand on the south side of town so that the south side of town can begin to uh look like other parts of town.
What does this expansion look like? What do you, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
That means that we, we would extend the city limits uh beyond where it is now so that we can uh build more housing, so that we're not stacking people on top of one another. And as I said the other night at the environmental forum, we can do both things. We can create housing in uh infield, but we can also go ahead and make plans now so we don't, we're not rushed to make plans in the, in the future because we've already done it now, so we can be smart about how we grow.
Okay, one second. So I wanna kinda uh switch trajectories a little bit and talk to Shelby for a little bit. Um because she did mention earlier about some of the things that she wanted to do in regards to energy. Um but I also wanna talk to you about what are, what are your thoughts on economic development? What are your thoughts on uh the Doak Campbell investment? Where do you stand on stuff like that?
Thank you, RJ. With the Doak Campbell vote, that's something that has been really contentious in our community. And as you've seen, we've been battling it out. And I think I wouldn't have voted in favor of it, but this is where we are today. We did vote in favor of it. So moving forward, how does the public get the benefit from this vote? We gave twenty-seven million dollars to FSU. In return, the public should have received something. You're not able to go to the stadium and rent it out. That is the public benefit that we should have received. We should receive a public benefit where in return, we have access to FSU's libraries. We didn't receive that either. And so if we're going to give such, so much money and so much benefit to FSU and other institutions, the public should see a return on that investment as well. We should have more community access to FSU. And we should have more priority when it comes to receiving discounted rates for tickets from FSU. There needs to be more collaboration, especially because this was such a contentious vote and the community feels like they were being um, they were being left out of the conversation. So the Doaks Campbell vote is really contentious. I wouldn't have voted in favor of it. But moving forward, how can we identify where the public can still receive that benefit? Because FSU certainly has, how can we receive it as well? And that starts with opening up FSU's resources and giving them to the community.
Do you have any plans for economic development?
Yeah, so actually, my husband and I, we have. Yeah, so actually my husband and I, we have a small business. It's a data and software firm. And the reason that we started it is because we were working with a local nonprofit that was having, ha- actually having trouble applying for. Economic development funds from the city. There was a really long application process. There was no real concierge service or a representative that could work with him through the process. So we decided to help him with grant management and also receiving and applying for the grant. And there are a lot of things that our small and mid-sized businesses need. But the very first thing is just more resources, more communication. And more one-on-one service to help them apply for resources in our community and identify where there's opportunity. And then in terms of blueprint and economic development funding. There's a lot more that we can do to open up the market for our local businesses to make it easier for them to access affordable commercial space. That's one really, what do you say?
Like what?
Yeah, so recently the city actually, uh, was working with a brewery. To, uh, redevelop the downtown, um. Water tower. I think instead of turning that into a brewery that is owned by a company. It should have been redeveloped by the city and made available as a public space. Where businesses can, kind of like a public market, where businesses can rent space. And then also have an event space as well for a community to access. So when it comes to just making it easier for our small and mid-sized business. The biggest thing is making sure that we are reducing costs for them. And that can be having affordable commercial space, that can be buying materials in bulk, like those Cash App. And those Squarespace platforms where people have to swipe their card, that can be providing internet. That can be providing resources and information and communicating when bids are up. There are a lot of small things that we can do that let our small and mid-sized businesses know that there are opportunity for them. But because small businesses do not know there's opportunity, they think they have to do all of this on their own. So we need to do a lot better job of communicating the resources that exist in this community. And also investing into affordable commercial space so that they can maintain access and get into the market. My campaign office is actually in the process of potentially being demolished. It is on FAMU Way. It is in an industrial plaza and the plaza is going to be converted into senior housing. We don't know where people are going to go. And the same issue was done with the Soma Walls Development. We have, so when we think about how do we make it easier for small businesses to exist? We have to provide commercial space for them that is affordable. That's not going to happen if we're demolishing affordable space and not identifying where people can move to.
I also wanna ask you another quick question about affordable housing. For those who are concerned about affordable housing, who feel, who might think that Commissioner Cox isn't doing enough or. Um, because for instance, the the, uh, country club, the property on Country Club off of Orange. A lot of people, although we're. We see them trying to improve the area. A lot of people fear gentrification is happening there. That took away about thirty seven percent of, uh, of property, of city property, uh, and not being replaced or putting somewhere else. So if you were elected, what voice would you be able to bring to deal with people who have those concerns?
The biggest issue that I hear about when it comes to housing is the fear of gentrification and displacement. Before the city allows a developer to tear down housing. We have to make sure that we are doing an analysis of the existing property market. Saying, okay, if we tear down the housing here, how will this impact the market and where will residents be able to go to? That was not done when it came to the Orange Avenue com- apartment complexes. And then we also did not track where these housing vouchers would be used and if residents would be able to come back to development after the project was done. So we need to be more conscientious and intentional about who we allow to develop here. And how these developments will impact the character and the composition of our neighborhoods. We cannot just allow developers to tear down housing and not. Be conscientious about how that will really impact the market and the composition of our neighborhoods. The same wing, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was gonna ask Ms. Cox if she can weigh in on this and see what her position is. Um, I want you to finish. I'm sorry. So go ahead.
Yeah, the the last point I'll make on this is I actually started a affordable housing task force with the Providence Neighborhood Association. And some members from FSU, the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, um, the FAMU FSU College of Engineering. To talk about how the development of FAMU Way and Stucky Avenue will impact displacement in the province's neighborhood. There is a really, really big fear that the city is using public dollars. To incentivize private interests to buy up land. Displace residents and rebuild housing for a new population. So I think with those concerns in mind, the city once again has to be more intentional. About who they allow to develop and making sure that we identify vacant land in communities and partner. And build housing on them, affordable housing for people who live in the community. There's a really big issue with new housing coming, but it's not for the existing population. It is for a new one that is usually wealthier and wider. And so these are the big fears that I'm hearing from residents. And these are concerns that need to be addressed. And we need to avoid displacement by tracking and developing tools to figure out how can we limit. And minimize impacts to the market.
That's good. Thank you. So Ms. Cox, if you can kind of respond to that, it's a lot of things she said that needs to be done. Is any of this stuff being done?
Absolutely. Uh, first of all, let me mention the Orange Avenue Apartments, um, that is not a city project. That's the Tallahassee Housing Authority. That is not city property. Now, the city of Tallahassee and the county, uh, provided some funding to allow. Uh, Tallahassee Housing Authority to to apply and be awarded federal dollars to be able to do that work there. But that is not a city project.
Following up with them to see how.
Absolutely. Uh, Ms. Brenda Williams is, uh, Red. She she comes and provides updates, uh, all along the way. So absolutely, we are keeping up with what's going on there. I live in walking distance, really, uh, uh, one block away. So I I ride through there almost every day and I, so I see what's going on. I have questions. I call and I get my questions answered. So I just wanted to, first of all, set that straight. And, uh, Shelby is right, uh, in regards to FSU and that should be community benefit. I'm glad she said that because there is great community benefit. When, uh, when this, this, this vote happened, before it went, it happened, I went to the president, Dr. McCullough. Along with the deputy city manager, uh, to meet with them to help them understand that public dollars equal public access. We have provided on our, uh, on our, um, uh, tilegov.com, we provided a list. A a graphic that shows all of those community benefits and it includes access to Doak. Access to Ruby Diamond, access to the Civic Center, access to many FSU facilities, including. Tickets to to events. They're not just football, not just sporting events, but also other events, access to the magnetic lab. So I I encourage, uh, the public to, uh, re- to take a look at that. I've tried to share it as much as I can. There's great community benefit that we're getting and as well as the sustainability of twelve hundred jobs. Um, as a result of that work that will be done there. Also.
Because earlier we, it was mentioned forty five jobs. So which one is it?
This twelve hundred jobs will be sustained by the work that's gonna be done there. That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying. Uh, as as Mr. Marsland said, facts matter. And I'm I'm.
I wanna ask too for the access.
I can.
Is the sky, the skybox, the sky club up there, um, I don't remember which wing that is at the stadium. Is that, uh, accessible or able for the public to access?
I don't know whether the skyboxes are accessible. We're not paying for skyboxes. We're not paying for luxury seating. We're paying for ADA and safety enhancements to Doak Campbell.
No, so to clarify, I use the term skybox and I probably shouldn't have, but this is basically the wing where they have the diner at the, uh. Where you have to be a member to even.
I think you're referring to the university club.
The university club, that's right, that's right.
Well, we have no, we have, we nothing, that has nothing to do with this. That's a private other company. And I don't even know how to explain who they are, but twenty seven million dollars did not go to do anything there. It was for safety and, uh, and ADA compliance.
Mm-hmm, gotcha. Okay.
Regina, and and if I, if I could have a chance to, uh, uh, respond there. Um, I I think we've, we've discussed this at a previous forum that we were all at. And it's not that we're saying that FSU is not giving crumbs on my opinion of what they call access. And it's sad that this issue is turned about, do you support FSU or do you not? Trust me, in two thousand nine, I was named FSU's notable no. I bleed guarded and goal and I support FSU. But I also know how to stand up against something that isn't right. With me, I'm saying that when you talk about the ability to make an impact. I'm all for working together and making, uh, our our community work. I think a better deal, not that I I disagree with the funding of Doak. And, um, the votes, cuz I I really honestly, I don't think these blueprint dollars were, uh, intended for stadium projects. However, I say be careful. You can really flip an economic development, um, story around and say, oh, well, we're gonna lose. Um, funding here and we're gonna lose the football season and that will hurt our hospitality and hotel industry here, so we need to make sure we fix these projects. And that's how you get it done. It's very simple. You can practically use it for whatever you can justify as economic development. However, I would say a better return on that, that would have softened the blow to the community that still has not been heard and can still be done. Is a simple match in education. We all know that the power of education can give residents a. Opportunity for a better life, a better income earning potential. And each of these institutions, FAMU, TCC, and FSU, offer education. They can make a match into this community and say, hey, we see we have an issue on gun violence. We will match the money get from the public in education dollars so that we give where we can give and what we offer. And the city can match that as well by helping us out where they say that they need help.
That's a fair question. So, um, Commissioner Cox, how reachable do you think that is?
Uh, if if, uh, Mr. Marsland would take the time to take a look at the community benefits that are listed. There is a, uh, the Aspire Program where the, uh, university has agreed. To work with our youth to provide academic support. It's it's a program that's already going, that's already in place that they've been, and and, and he, no, he's shaking his head, but we gotta be open. To knowing and learning and we're gonna listen. We've gotta be able to to look at what the facts really are. Now, I'll say this, I'll say this to RJ. Uh, Mr. Marsland, the Notable No can also go over to Florida State and talk with Dr. McCullough. And negotiate whatever deal he wants to negotiate with him in regards to whatever he's saying. At the, at the, at the moment in time, I was a commissioner. I went over there and we made, we gave a list of things that we wanted. And they gave us what we asked for, including participation and using our tempo participants to do this work. Also, uh, adhering to the minority of women, small, uh, uh, businesses, um, being able to have them to do some of this work. Also providing emergency management services, uh, there as well. There is, there's a whole list of community benefit. That if the, if if we would just slow down and take a look, Shelby is correct. We should have, we should receive community benefit. And I went over and negotiated the community benefit.
If I can respond to that point, let me put two things out for the record. Two seconds, let me get my two points. Point number one, Commissioner Cox, I have an open letter that was published publicly in the newspaper. I'm still waiting on President McCullough's response to the invitation to come and speak to him about that. Where we asked many things and amongst many things was, let's make an effort to raise the money. And then if you can't raise it, come back to the city commission and get those funds. That's out there. It's for public record. It's been publicly published in the newspaper. It's out there. I have a standing request to meet with him because I would like to say as of my alma mater, I would like to see more come out of that institution. When it sits in the backyard of the poorest zip code, three, two, three, zero, four, and it sits back and we can help. All right. Point two, and very quickly, I I I go back to say this again. There were many options on the table, even saying give FSU ten million and preserve ten for the community. But once again, those options were not taken away. And the reason that I I I really got. Uh, bothered by this, for the first time I can remember in city history. We've made great concessions to allow the president of FSU to appear via video conference. So that no one could ask questions of him, so he didn't have to face the audience that came to City Hall. So that this vote could get passed in comfort. I've never seen a constituent have the access available where they could send a video in. With their comments to play it for the city commission and so that they can go with no questions. And I hope that in the future, when other residents who have double jobs that cannot make it to city commission, that we keep that same policy open. And allow them to send their comments in the same way.
RJ, RJ, let me, let me, let me, let me say this real quick. Um, Ms., uh, Dr. McCullough can speak for himself. He can accept any appointments that he he chooses to. I can't, I I I have nothing to do with that. But, uh, the 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 night before his inauguration was that, was that meeting. And that was why I was told that he sent, uh, a video. He sent his assistant there to announce him and and that was done. And, uh, I assure you that given a situation like that with anyone else in our community, uh, we will do that. We provide access for people to to present and speak to us via WebEx. Or our video, however they they wanna do. We have done that. So that was not out of the norm or out of the ordinary. So, uh, you know.
I wanna go back a little bit on something Shelby asked, said, uh, she said, uh, with the homes that were, well, I mentioned the homes that were demolished on. Orange Ave. And so Shelby mentioned that some of the homes that are proposing to come to that same place are, you know, somewhere around the. Uh, three hundred thousand, three hundred some thousand, uh, and they aren't going to be for the people who was once living there. Uh, what are your, what is your response to that? Does the the person that's coming to report from the Tallahassee Housing Authority? Are they telling you about the developer and the types of homes that are coming to that space?
Let me just say this, that they are working with the Florida Housing Authority. And, uh, the Tallahassee Housing Authority is working with the, with the federal, um, uh, government and with the Housing Authority. That is a HUD project. That is a public housing project. I am not aware of any three hundred thousand dollar homes that are being built there. Um, I've not heard any, any reports, nor have I seen it in any reports. And I have, um, people who I really trust, who are are in this industry. And none of that has been said to me that they're building any three hundred thousand dollar homes there. In fact, what we saw and what was presented to us did not look like that. And we've been told that individuals who used to, who lived there. Will have the first right of refusal, uh, to to come back and they they, uh, you're using their vouchers to to go to live other places. And as a matter of fact, it is my understanding that former Mayor, uh, Dot Inman Johnson worked with, uh, the Tallahassee Housing Authority. To help relocate many of those residents. So I trust her. I trust Brenda, uh, Williams. And I trust the, uh, the the Housing Authority that's working with them to do this. I'm, that's not my my wheelhouse, so I have to depend on people who know how to do it. And so, uh, from what I have seen, that is not the the case.
Okay, Shelby, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond really quickly and say I didn't mention anything about three hundred thousand dollar housing. I was mentioning the Orange Avenue project. And the issue that I've been hearing from residents is that people who had to vacate or were displaced are not able to found, find comparable. Housing. And that is why there is a lawsuit right now between Orange Avenue Tenants Union and the Tallahassee Housing Authority. And the second case I would like to make is, we need to be tracking residents who are displaced or who are leaving and then can come back. Because right now it's very much their word versus THA's word. And so if we are tracking these issues, that way we can have a streamlined approach to say, okay, these are the issues that currently exist. And that way it's not he said versus she said, and we can have a more reasonable approach to say, how do we reduce displacement? And ensure that the people who were here can return back to housing and are not being displaced.
So I did ask that earlier, Commissioner Cox, of whether it was being tracked. You you said.
It is. It is being, it is being tracked. Uh, Br- Brenda Williams, Executive Director of the Tallahassee Housing Authority. She reports to the federal government. She does not report to the city. So it is her responsibility to report to HUD, uh, where these individuals are and where 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 they were placed. Of course, she knows where they are. She knows where they were placed because they placed them. And so, yes, they are tracking them.
Is it still gonna be, um, uh, T, uh, Housing Authority property?
Yes, yes, it is. It is. Absolutely. That is, that is a Tallahassee Housing Authority project. Our only role was to provide some funding so that they could leverage federal dollars.
Okay, okay. All right, guys, this has been really fun. We are actually bleeding into the next sector. And I still have some, uh, lightning questions to ask you guys. So I, I don't wanna leave without us having that conversation. So, uh, just real briefly. Uh, there are several questions I'm gonna bring up. You have, um, so I'm gonna have to shut, cut down your time. Normally it's thirty seconds, but you'll have fifteen seconds to respond. Um, of course, as you can see, I am a little lenient, so if you need a little bit more time, I'll be considerate, only if it's. Uh, but just to be fair, and everybody has that that grace period, but just be considerate of those coming behind you. Um, and 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 everybody else involved. Um, so I'm gonna go with my first question. I wanna ask it to Shelby. Um, and I want to know, uh. And I want to know, do you believe that the city commission overpaid for things?
Absolutely. One of the most recent, or one of the examples I can give is when my husband was working for the city of Tallahassee. We, we don't even do basic things like provide, um, gosh, I'm forgetting my train of thought. But yes, the city overpays for things and especially if you look at the contracts, paid over $200,000 for a company to develop just the branding and the marketing for one of our sustainability and housing resiliency plans. So the city pays too much when it comes for some of the contracts. And I think if we give more of that, more of those job opportunities to people within the city, that will reduce costs. But yes, we pay too mu, too much for things, especially when it comes to basic technological contracts.
Thank you. And Adner, same question. Do you think the city paid too much for things? Are they overpaying for things?
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, things that we do like, you know, handing out subsidies to our developers and compensating them in different ways as we continue to expand, um, um, you know, projects is just, just one example of non-direct payment. But I mean, I think city procurement is absolutely broken under the current leadership. Um, I think we have shady deals, no bid land deals that we give away. Um, they have, it's, it's a regular occurrence now at City Hall as if something has not happened. And, um, again, I, I think that we need to get away from that type of politics.
Same question to you, Ms. Cox. Do you think that the city overpaid for things?
I do not think that the city overpays for things because we have an, we have an excellent procurement director that makes sure that we are bidding according to the law and that we are taking the, 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 uh, either the best bidder or for whatever reason, the bid that needs to be, be taken. I think that when we start making accusations like that, you're harming the profession of, of procurement. And these people take this very seriously. Haven't worked for the state of Florida procurement before. I know how serious those kinds of accusations can be.
Okay. Um, and then I want to ask the next question back to you, Shelby. Uh, would you say that you are pro-choice?
Absolutely. I believe every woman has the right to make their own decision. No woman should be told if they need to carry a pregnancy to term. There are complications that come with pregnancy. There are situations where you're in unsupportive environments. Every woman needs to make that decision themselves. And if they do decide to have an abortion, we need to make sure that they are in a caring, loving and supportive environment. So I'm absolutely pro-choice and I believe that that decision ultimately resides to the woman and no government should have a place in deciding what they can and cannot do with their body. They deserve bodily autonomy.
Thank you. Adner, same question.
I am pro-choice and I'm very proud to support that position. Um, I believe that, you know, when the city had an opportunity for us to support that position, uh, my opponent voted against the resolution to simply say that she's gonna stand with women. And I am very proud today to have the endorsement of our National Women's Organization because they know that I will be a fighter for women's rights and I will stand up for women's rights. And when they need us to stand up the most, I will not cower and refuse to sign my name to a resolution to support such matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cox, same question.
Absolutely, I'm pro-choice. I've been pro-choice all my life and I'm the only one here who has had to make that choice. I had an ectopic pregnancy and you know how ectopic pregnancies end. I also took a friend to have an abortion because that was the best decision for her at the time. I don't need to sign my name to a do-nothing resolution to prove that I am pro-choice. I've been, been doing it and showing it all my life. The city has no role. That is state and federal law. The city has no role. The question was not whether I stood, uh, uh, with women. And I, and you go back and watch the, 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 uh, the meeting, I am absolutely pro-choice.
Thank you. Now, for those that don't know, the resolution that, that being, that is being referenced here was when, uh, an opportunity came up for the city commissioners. And really, I think everybody really had, was, was voiced, was encouraged to be a part of this to decide of whether the city was going to stand for the role, the, the turn for Roe versus Wade or, uh, stand against it, just say, you know, kind of step back and not be involved with it. And so what I believe Adner is saying is that Commissioner Cox said that she was gonna stay out of it, basically what she voted for. Um, and so can you elaborate a little bit on why you made that decision and do you regret that decision?
I do not regret that decision because even those who did sign for are also being criticized and ridiculed. I would, I do those things that I believe are important. I put my name to things that I believe are important. That piece of paper said nothing. Now, if it's time to go over to the Florida Legislature to stand and say something, absolutely. Because they can make something happen. They can do that. And that was, that was what I was saying. The city had no role in that. Now, and name any other cities, major cities where that, that's different. It is state and federal law. And I had great conversation with our attorney to make sure that I was not making a mistake by doing that. Because we can't do it, there's nothing the city can do. We cannot pass that law.
Okay. All right, so the next question.
I just wanna, can I just add on really quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
So in the resolution, the city did say that they support, uh, the access to reproductive healthcare. The city has workers who work less than 30 hours a week that do not receive healthcare benefits. So although the city cannot, you know, restrict or make limitations on abortions, they can make sure that their workers, every worker receives access to healthcare, including reproductive healthcare, like accents, access to abortion, or sorry, birth control. Um, so there is some things that the city can do that's within their control.
And that, and you're saying that's what was in the resolution?
In the resolution, they were saying that they are encouraging access to reproductive healthcare and not all of city workers have access currently.
And you're saying that's important here? As, as Ms., as Commissioner Cox is saying, uh, this is a do-nothing resolution and you're saying that's important?
Yeah, because this is a resolution that is stating that everyone deserves access to reproductive healthcare. But we also had, has a city that has employees that do not have access to reproductive healthcare. So where we can add more teeth to this resolution is by ensuring that workers who work less than 30 hours a week, OPS workers, part-time workers, maintain, get, get access to reproductive healthcare, get access to basic healthcare. That is something that is within the city's control and that is something that can be funded if we had a budget that focused on the will of the people.
Thank you.
And RJ, RJ, since she mentioned the budget, we have held our tax rate at 4.1 mils for many, for several years. The reason for that is to make sure that we don't raise taxes on, on, on folks and especially in this, this day and time. 4.1 mil does not do everything that we needed to do, but it does those things that we must have done to, to keep moving our city forward. So of course, we could do a lot of things, but it would require raising our taxes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, okay, so I'm gonna, I, I would love to kind of dig deep into this, but I wanna be fair to the other candidates. So I'm just gonna go on to the next question. Um, and I wanna ask about the ethics at the city. Um, Adner, if you can, well, let's keep it in the same rotation. So Shelby, what are your thoughts on the ethics and what ways do you think it can be approved? Or are you with how it is?
I think that there are issues at the city commission when it comes to ethics and those issues have been identified and have been existing before this current administration. I think if we want to strengthen ethics and increase reform, we have to listen to the recommendations that our independent ethics review board has provided that still has not been adopted by the city commission. One of them being having a stronger, more robust definition when it comes to lobbyists and also having a more detailed tracker when it comes to conversations that our city commissioners are having with potential lobbyists or people that are trying to yield influence onto our city commission and their agenda. So we have issues when it comes to ethics in the city commission. And how we resolve that is by working with our independent ethics review board and taking the recommendations that they give us and actually implementing them. And not half of those implementations, but all of those implementations.
Thank you. Adner, same question.
Thanks. And I think that we all have seen the indictments that have flown down through City Hall. And I think that when the independent ethics board came back to the recommendations, we saw our commissioners just decline, de, de, declined to accept all of the recommendations. And I think the recommendations do nothing but protect us. But we wanna top that we have some of the strongest recommendations. But what really confuses me is when we vote down those recommendations from the independent ethics board, but then come in the next meeting and say, oh, well, I think people who have been convicted should not come here and lobby them. We need to, but it's time for common sense, um, policy. Well, we need to make sure that we know who our commissioners are meeting with and, or what type of relationships that they're having. Uh, I, I will be the first to admit, uh, that now we have, you know, major developers coming into now playing into campaigns and now we have money issues. And so, uh, when, I think we're giving out no bid contracts and things like that. We need to know who our commissioners are meeting with. And so I think also when we look at the example of Dope as we wrap up, um, a lot of these commissioners took contributions before and after and when asked to return them uh, and to stand by their vote, they, uh, one candidate, not here, mentioned that it would, the mayor said that it would be a voter, um, it would be voter suppression. I, I took great offense to that comment because at the end of the day, you don't need to take money from people who have business before the city. And that's one of the things that I hope to champion when I get in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cox, can you share with us your thoughts on the, the ethics that are maintained at City Hall?
I am proud of the fact that we have, um, adopted the strongest ethics policy ever. When we inherited City Hall, we did inherit some issues. And what we've tried to do is to try to, uh, address those issues, be very transparent. But what I believe is that we need to see where this takes us and make adjustments as need be. Uh, no one can just give you something and you just swallow it wholesale. We are working very well with the independent ethics board. They are, they have no issue with, uh, what we're, what we're doing and how we're doing it because we work well together and they understand that the way this is structured, that the commission can decide to, to accept or not to accept. And so I think that we're, I think we're in good shape, uh, and we will continue to get better.
Okay.
No, RJ, I, I should just say. Okay, cause if it's independent, I'm just saying, let's like keep it independent, but go ahead.
I gotta ask, so the next, I would like to ask this question to you, Commissioner Cox. Can you tell us, share with us, how did you vote on the inde, uh, the independent ethic laws that was recently brought to the table?
Recently, what was brought to the table was the definition of a lobbyist, of a paid lobbyist. And I, I, we voted for some of the, some of the items that they brought, but some of them we did not because they, they're covered by the state law, lobbying laws. So we did, we did, felt as though we did not have to, uh, pull away from that. Also, we wanted to make sure that we kept things consistent between, um, the, the city commission, blueprint and CRA.
Okay. Um, so the specific clause that talked about, uh, those with felony records having to wait a period of time before they can, uh, before they can lobby, uh, did you vote for or against that?
I brought that to the commission. So that was a separate and a part. The independent ethics board did not bring that to us. I brought that.
What made you say that?
Say it again?
What made you bring that to the table?
Because I listened to folks in the community who said that we didn't, did not want someone who had been convicted to come out and be able to come back and lobby the city as soon as they got out of, uh, out of jail. So I agreed with that and I was.
Any felony, it's the felony.
No, 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 it's just, it's, it's someone, especially of, let, let's call it what it is. We did not want a former commissioner to be able, or an elected official to be able to get out of jail for, for what, for what some have gone to jail for, to be able to come back and begin to lobby the city once they got out of jail.
Gotcha.
That's, that's what that one was about.
Okay, okay. Uh, and the last question I'm gonna ask is your thoughts on defunding the police? A lot of, uh, people in the community feel like the police needs to be defunded. Shelby, what do you think about that?
I think those are good calls for concern. There are issues with our police that are being militarized as we just saw recently with some of them down in Defunct Springs that are doing brand promotion for a company that wants to preserve warrior culture. So there are seri, serious issues here with are the police actually benefiting the community and taking care of their needs? I don't think that we need to defund the police because they are a service here in Tallahassee and we need them to respond to calls for help here, but we do, do need to look at their budget. Need to, um, transparent, public audit of their budget, find out ways to see where, where redundancies are and find out how we can reduce their spending so that we can free up money for other places so that we can have real community access to, um, some of the resources that they are responding to. So I think that while we do not need to refund the police, we do need to restructure the budget and take out where there's, um, extra money and put them into departments that need those fundings more so they can better respond to the needs and the calls for service for people.
Thank you. Uh, and Adner, same question.
Um, yeah, I, I think we have to be very careful with that, um, that, I would say that, that, that concept of defunding the police. I think that what people are asking is that we need to re, reorganize the funding of where the funds that we give, which is a large amount in the city, almost a third of the city's budget goes to law enforcement. Uh, I think that we want to see a lot more of that funds get down to the bottom ranks, go into prevention services, mental health services that supplement what our law enforcement officers do. And I'm glad to see us starting to make some progress on that, uh, particular issue. I have traveled the country with Attorney Crump fighting social justice issues for over 18 years and we know, uh, that there are some issues that we need to fight. But we also have to be realistic that when guns and bullets go flying, we depend on the police officers to show up and to keep us safe in this community as well. And so we have to find that very, uh, fine balance to make sure that we are putting more into prevention services and not just reacting to things that happen into our community. Uh, and then we also have to, you know, address policies that can make sure that the money is not just being stuck in the upper brass, but it actually gets down to the officers who have the day-to-day contact with the individuals. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. And Ms. Cox, same to you.
Absolutely. I do not believe that we need to defund the police. Um, the, the police budget allows for more than just people rolling around patrolling the streets. The, that, that budget also funds programs. My grandson participated in the police athletic league. That it takes care of, uh, those kinds of things, offer, uh, community-supported programs that, uh, that, that we, we need in our community. It, we're also using some of it to support sending out mental health professionals instead of sending officers out. So absolutely, we do need our public safety, we need our streets to be safe, but we also have police officers who are community-minded as well. So I do not support the, the funding of the police, but I think that we just need to make sure that the public understands what the police budget actually does.
Thank you. Uh, and I just have a, a quick yes or no question to you, Commissioner Cox. Uh, for the people, for all, with all the backlash that you've received uh, for your decision to support the Dope Campbell's, uh, fund, would, do you regret that decision?
I do not regret that decision. Uh, what I do regret is that it has become so divisive in our community.
It is, yes, a lot of people stand on, uh, both sides of the spectrum, uh, true enough. So I completely understand that. Um, so I just wanna ask real quick to everybody, so I think before I go, about you all's campaign dollars. Um, Commissioner Cox, who are some of the larger donors? And are any of the donors, um, people who are part of the Dope Campbell, uh, decision?
I will just, I have to refer you to my treasury and to my financial reporting, uh, because we all report. I do not know, I cannot sit here and tell you who, who my, uh, largest donors have been. Uh, but I do not discriminate on who can donate to my campaign. This is my fifth time running for office. And I have always, I even went into my own to, to fund my campaign. So I am unboiled and unbiased. So no matter how much anyone contributes to my campaign, it does not buy my decision. And anyone who knows me knows that.
Thank you. Adner, who is your largest, uh, donor?
Um, I think a lot of my donors, um, have been grassroots supporters, um, that are from Tallahassee, um, and individuals who, that I've taken from PACS are only individuals who have very like-minded thought patterns on making sure that, uh, we have officials there that will listen to the people, but also people that do not have business before the city of Tallahassee. I think we get into a very gray area when we start accepting contributions from people who have business before Tallahassee. And again, I support the commissioners for making decisions that they feel in their best interest is the best thing. But in case our commissioners does not know who is donating to their finance report, let me be the first to say, it's the FSU boosters that had the business right in front of the city commission and we got money before the vote and after the vote. And if you don't know where the money is coming from, I think that's a little bit difficult because we, you have to make expenditures as a candidate. So you have to know at some point where, what money is in your account. I just think that that's just unacceptable to tell people you don't know what's in your account. We all know who's in there and again, it's developers' special interests and it's their largely. So I do encourage everybody to go to Leon. So I do encourage everybody to go to Leonvotes.com and see who's funding the candidates. Thank you.
Leonvotes.gov. Okay, good. I didn't know that, but good. Shelby, tell us a little bit about your donors. Who are some of your major contributor, contributors?
My biggest contributor who has maxed out on his campaign contributions is actually my dad. Um, I'm not taking any money from PACs. I received an endorsement from the Tallahassee Board of Realtors. And I, with that endorsement came a thousand dollar check and I rejected it because I believe that PACs and other groups have too much influence in our election. The people are the ones who need to decide who should get into office, not PACs who have special interests. And when it comes to who is donating to Commissioner Williams Cox's campaign, you can actually find that information through Leonvotes.gov or also Voter Focus. And if you look at her campaign contributions, the people who, not the people, but the businesses, there are businesses that have maxed out their contributions like Talcor. And Talcor is a major property holder in the city of Tallahassee and has also teared down low-income affordable housing and is sitting on land until the price is right. So I encourage people who are watching to look at who is supporting people's campaigns on the backend through campaign contributions and also to recognize the people who are supporting their campaign. Those are the people who are also going to potentially influence their vote as well or influence a type of information that the candidate receives. So the biggest contributors on my campaign are my family members, my friends, people I have met while canvassing and on the campaign trail who believe in the mission of bringing public service, high-quality public service back to City Hall and also investing into improving the quality of our public utility and our transportation infrastructure system. So I do not accept money from PACs. I have the opportune, opportunity to and I don't because they have too much influence in our local elections.
RJ, could you please give me ten seconds?
Counting down now.
Okay, uh, I, I do encourage everyone to go and look and see who has contributed to my campaign. Uh, and, and while you're at it, look at the, the previous campaigns as well. I am unballed and unbossed.
Gotcha. Okay, guys, so I'm just gonna give you thirty seconds to appeal to the community to uh, ask there for their votes. You all will get uh, just you by yourself uh, will get to speak uh, to the community. And then we have to wrap this up. This conversation has been so in uh, informative, um, and I really appreciate all of you all's time. Thank you for being here. Um, so I'm gonna start with you, Shelby.
Well, thank you so much again, RJ, uh, Dream Defenders and Community Builders for this opportunity. Once again, my name is Shelby Green and I'm running for Tallahassee City Commission, seat five, because I want to restore public trust. I want to restore power back to the people and make sure our voices and our issues are finally being brought to the dais and we're receiving some action. And we need to do that by tracking issues by using data and technology to our advantage. I have a background in chemical engineering, software and data engineering, and I also work as a research fellow. So we need to have people in office who recognize the skills that we need to bring accountability and more investment to public services into our community. And I believe I'm the candidate for that job.
Thank you, Shelby. Adner? You're on you, Adner.
That would help. Thank you. Uh, again, I want to say, thank you, RJ, for being our host for such an informative conversation tonight. I also want to thank the Dream Defenders um, and those who stand up in the realm of social justice for the truth, uh, because it matters. Uh, I am your candidate for Tallahassee City Commission, seat five. And I know that uh, we can do this and we can do it together. We deserve a commissioner who will listen to the people and respect when the people say no. We deserve a city where people can come here and open a business and pursue their dreams. I am going to fight for you all so that we have our neighborhoods that are safe. And I'm gonna take the real measures to make sure that we increase our community trust between us and the police department. I'm also going to drive development for our everyday people and not our special interests. And to make sure that we create affordable housing options for you all and not just give the developers a handout. Our public dollars with me in office will go to uh, the public benefit and not private profit. And so I ask for your help on August the twenty-third or during early voting, August thirteenth, to select my name, Adner Marcellin, the middle of the, the middle of the ballot, to make sure that your voice is amplified at City Hall. I, it's been an honor to run for the first time and I'm enjoying hearing your concerns. And I promise you that I will hold true to what you have asked us to do and that we will represent you and your interests at all times at City Hall. My doors are open and my information is www.hayadner.com. I hope that you'll join me on this uh, trip as I seek to amplify your voice. Thank you.
And thank you, Adner. Last but not least, Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, RJ, the Dream Defenders and Community Builders uh, for this opportunity. Let me look you in your eye and tell you, not read my response, but let me tell you that I have been your commissioner. I have been your voice in the room. I have a record that I stand on and I'm very proud of it. I'm not perfect, but I'm just like you, doing the best I can to make sure that we keep moving our city forward and that we move our generations forward. And I appreciate your vote by August twenty-third so that we can continue to look forward together because we're trending in the right direction. Thank you very much for this opportunity and I look forward to continuing to be your city commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Thank you so much, Shelby. Thank you so much, Adner, for being here. I really appreciate you all's time and this conversation. Um, and I encourage you all, I say to every candidate that uh, I hope your public service to your heart to want to run is not limited to the race. No matter what happened on Election Day, I hope that you all will continue to serve our community because we need minds like you all to help us continue to move forward. So thank you all again for being here.
Thanks for the space, RJ.
Thank you, RJ. You've been a wonderful host.
Thank you.
Have a good night. I wish you all the best.
Yeah, see you guys at the mixer.
Yes, August eleventh. If you can meet there. And at the very least, I ask if you can share the flyer amongst your audiences. That's greatly appreciated.
And RJ, I won't be able to attend, but the owner of the uh, Signature Lounge is a great friend of mine. Talk to him about the work we've done in this community together.
Uh, he's gonna come back for some more work, especially if you get in.
That's right, that's right.
That's your district. So for anybody, whoever gets in office, he has some ideas, which I think would be, is great. So which.
And I've always encouraged him. I've always encouraged him because he does have great ideas.
Yes, ma'am. All right, y'all. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
So guys, that has been a fully, I mean, fully, we were deep in conversation. And I mean, I guess I saw, especially for that race uh, for Commissioner, seat five, I saw how much they were going back and forth in their other uh, forums. But I don't know why we thought an hour would be enough for them. They had so much to say, so many valid points for us to think about. And I hope you all learned as much as I did. Um, you know, perspective does matter and uh, those are the things that we're also gonna continue in this conversation um, when we talk to District Three. So District Three actually wraps up our forum. This is our very last interview. For all those who's been following and supporting us this week, thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Community Builders. Whole entire purpose is to keep the people of our community informed. We want to increase business activity in low economic neighborhoods. And we want to keep the people of the community engaged and empowered uh, by the decisions that need to be made, especially at the community level. We are not a political agency, so we are not politically driven. We do not endorse candidates. But we are, we do find it important and or imperative that we are involved in the spaces that uh, where decisions are made that impact our community. And it has really been an honor to, to be able to serve you all in this space as your program host for this week and you guys following and supporting us this week. It goes to show that you two find it very important for us to know the issues and to know why we're here. So thank you so much for being here. So this next group that I'm going to talk to uh, is going to be uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, the District Commissioner, um, District Three, County Commissioners, District Three. And so in order to be a candidate for that space, you have to live in that district. Um, so joining us this evening is Joey Lamar and Mr. Rick Minor. Uh, Mr. Rick Minor currently holds that seat. He is the incumbent in that seat. But he does have a couple of fellows who feel that uh, they can contribute better. And so that's what we're gonna find out tonight. Uh, so right after these messages, we're gonna jump right on into it. Thank you so much for being here.
Founded in April twenty twelve after the tragic killing of Trayvon Martin. Today, we are the ones organizing black and brown youth to build power in our communities to advance a new vision we have for the state. Our agenda is called the Freedom Papers. Through it, we are advancing our vision of safety and security away from prisons, deportation and war and towards healthcare, housing, jobs, and movement for all. We are the ones organizing to ensure that we live in a free democracy that is for us, by us. Our call to action is for you to join the Tallahassee Dream Defenders, one of the chapters in the state of Florida, to ensure that we are advancing our vision and a movement for all. Stay connected with our social media and stay up to date with anything regarding Dream Defenders on our website at dreamdefenders.org. Now, the question is, can we dream together?
And we're back. Thank you all for tuning in. Thank you for being here. I'm gonna just jump right on in because we are so behind. I really hope uh, that our guests this evening are gonna be able to accommodate our time. But so uh, uh, joining us this evening is Joey Lamar. Hi, Joey.
Hey, RJ, how are you?
I'm doing great. Thanks for being here. I'm gonna bring him on too. Hi, Rick, how are you?
Hi, RJ, how you doing?
Let me get this thing out your face. Hey, there you are.
How you doing?
I'm doing great. Welcome, guys. Thank you so much for your patience. I really appreciate you all's time. We, we're so behind right now. So let me ask, are you guys gonna be able to stay a little bit past than what we had planned?
I can stay a little bit. I promised my, my daughter I'd uh, I'd, I'd play Legos with her for a little bit before she goes to bed. So uh, got a little bit of a time constraint, but I, I'm here, I'm here. This is a good opportunity and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you so much, Joey. How about you? Are you gonna be able to stay a little bit?
Hey, um, I'm, I'm, I'm here for the team. You know, however late you need me to stay, we're gonna be here. I'm gonna get the job done. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it done right.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. So I made the mistake to put uh, Commissioner uh, Deb, uh, Diane Cox with Adner and Shelby, they've had a real firecracker race. I mean, everywhere they go. And I put them in the middle. That was a bad call on our end, so I'm so super sorry for that. Um, I definitely should have switched them, but thank you guys so much for being accommodating. Uh, it, they, I've learned a lot, honestly, uh, throughout this whole week, just being, talking to all the different uh, candidates running. So I look forward to our conversation as well this evening. Um, all right, so I wanna just tell you some housekeeping rules. Uh, you might, you might have seen is probably what led to us being behind in the last one. I really try to make it more conversational, uh, unlike other, a lot of other forums where you do, are you, you are timed for your responses. Um, we try to just make it where we truly wanna understand your perspective and what you're looking to bring in the office. Uh, there will be a point where there is some, a question with some time responses towards the end. Uh, but in the beginning, we're just more really wanting to understand your ideas and your plans. Um, and so if it gets a bit too lengthy, you'll see me do this. I don't know if you saw in the last interview uh, when I was work, talking with everyone else, I will put my, we call that the trick trigger um, up. And that's just to ask you to wind down your point. You don't have to come to an abrupt stop. Uh, but if you can kind of bring it to a close so we can move on, that'd be greatly appreciated. Uh, did you all have any questions?
No, I'm good.
RJ, I just wanna, you, you, I've been watching you in some of the other forums and you're, you're a great host. Looking forward to uh, to this evening.
Thank you. I, I try to be there. I, even certain things I don't even call people out on, but it's really cool to see when I hear the opponent kinda like, well, what she really means. And they kinda bring it out. And I'm like, yeah, there you go. So about that. So, um, but thank you so much uh, for that compliment. Greatly appreciated. Um, so I'm gonna just ask some regular questions. I wanna talk about you all's District, District Three. Uh, Rick Minor currently holds the position now. Um, Rick, how long have you been there?
I was elected in twenty eighteen, so I've been here for uh, four years.
Yeah. Um, and can you tell us about the boundary lines of District Three?
Sure. So roughly speaking, um, District Three is the northwest quadrant of.
Timeout. Because you have the office, so we know you know. But Joey, can you tell us what the boundary lines of District Three is?
Yeah, so uh, District Three is kinda, I would, I would call it a little funky. Um, basically, uh, if you look at the corner of Meridian and Thar, I would kinda use that as like a ground point and it goes northwest from there. It takes Meridian all the way up to the county line. But then there's this other section, uh, that goes past Meridian uh, up to I-ten and over to uh, Fletchman and Olson that includes the Benton Hills area, um, some of the areas in um, in Mid- Kentucky Hills, uh, and that area going over there. Uh, and so it's kinda at this boot area, but then it goes all the way over to Mission Road uh, above I-ten um, in that area, in the Fred George area, as well as the old Bainbridge area and Mission Road. Um, so yeah, it's, it's kind of a funky district, but it's, yeah, it's kind of that northwest area. And of, of course, it includes Lake Jackson as well. So that's kind of the boundaries of our district.
Okay. And uh, did he miss anything, uh, Mr. Minor?
No, no, he said Fletchman, but I think what he meant is Fleishman. So, but everything, everything else is spot on, so.
Because I feel like just about every other person I know, some people say Fletchman, some people say Fleishman. I've heard both. I never really knew which one was the correct. So uh, at least what it sounds like according to you, Rick, the uh, the proper way to say it is Fletchman.
That's, that's, that's what it is, but let's move on. We're, we're good to go. We've got a long, uh, long debates. Let's, we could dig into the details for sure, so.
Gotcha. Okay, so um, I'm gonna ask, um, Rick, just for uh, thirty seconds, if you can just appeal to the community, say who you are um, and why you are still running in this race.
Yeah, my name is uh, Rick Minor. I'm the, the current County Commissioner for District Three. I was elected in twenty eighteen and uh, uh, I, I'm running because um, I, I've done a lot of public policy in, in, in my life. And, and part of that is because it's calling. I used to be a consultant that did a lot of work around the country and overseas. And uh, just by chance, I was staffed on a government project. And um, the, the project was helping government become more responsive to its citizens. And I love the idea of working with the government and helping it be more effective, uh, more responsive to its citizens. And so that was what steered me toward this path in my career. Um, and um, being a county commissioner, it's, it's, it's hard work. The issues are tough. But um, it's a, it's a terrific job because you're doing good work for the people that live here. I love this county and uh, these are tough issues, but you need someone that can really dive into them, study them carefully and do what's best for the people that live here.
Thank you. Joey, same thing. If you can kinda tell us what, or tell us who you are, and also tell us why you're running.
Mark, I'm running for Leon County Commission in District 3, and I've knocked on a lot of doors. And when you talk to people about doing this job, they say it's, it's very tough. It's a tough job. So, it's gonna be difficult. And I say, I, I think you're right. But then I started thinking, I was like, you know, this is more than a job to me. This is a mission, right? This is a mission to decrease the homelessness that we see on the North Monroe corridor, right? It's out of control. I'm from Atlanta, and it looks like, it looks worse than Atlanta right now, right? So, we gotta do something about that. Then we gotta look at the crime. Crime is skyrocketing in our district. We have to look at the things that contribute to crime. That's lack of education, that's unstable housing, and that's also low wage jobs. We have to address those factors so we can reduce crime. And it's also a mission to achieve affordable housing. That is the one issue that we just are not talking about enough. We're bringing in these jobs at $30,000 a year, and we have homes that are priced at $200,000, $250,000. And so, it's hard for someone on $30,000 to be able to afford those homes. And so, to me, this is not a job. It's a mission to make District 3 better, and I'm not gonna stop until that mission is complete.
Thank you. So, good. So, that's gonna get us into our points here. So, you've mentioned affordable housing, you mentioned crime, and these are things that we're hearing across the whole city, everywhere, or across the whole county. And so, in District 3, how would you gauge, Rick, the level of crime in that area on a scale of 1 to 10?
Well, I mean, the, I mean, the crime compared to what, national or compared to the rest of the county? I mean, I'd say the level of crime in District 3 is, I mean, it's, it's as high, in some areas, it's higher than it is the rest of the county. You know, I, I'm supporting Sheriff McNeil's All-In Initiative. If you haven't heard of that, it's basically getting everyone in the community together to work together to fight crime. Also, with the county, we unanimously supported the, the Sheriff's Commission on the Status of Men and Boys, which helps identify at-risk boys and young men, and helps direct them away from crime and toward promising futures. And then, one thing that I'm really proud of is when I, when we had a large number of arrests along the I-10 North Monroe corridor for human trafficking, about 170 arrests. What I did is I called up some folks that are working on anti-human trafficking efforts in this county, talked to them about what we can do to help that, and I pushed through with my colleagues. We got funding for a new online free training program for anybody in the county to take. It's, you can go to that right now, stackpro.org, and take that training to learn how you and this community can fight against human trafficking. So, you know, we talk a lot, there are a lot of issues in, in the county, you know, crime, affordable housing, poverty, food insecurity. I think the people of District 3 are looking for someone that's getting things done. And one thing that we're gonna talk about during the, the forum here is, is in my last four years, I focused on getting things done, being a leader, and, and leading things to get, to accomplish things. That human trafficking video training, which is available to everybody here, is a good example of that.
Okay, so let's talk about the video training on that thing. I don't know if I came out right, but you know what I'm trying to say? The video training program for human trafficking, when did you start it?
So, we, I met with Robin Haskett Thompson.
The more direct question, when did it go live?
Oh, it went live about nine months ago.
Okay. And in those nine months, how many users have you guys been able to get?
The contract requires the provider to get about 1,000 people that attend the course. And right now, I think they're about at, I think 600 something. So, I've taken the course myself, and I would encourage anybody to take it as well. At the end of the course, it's about an hour long. You get a certificate that shows that you've taken the course. So, it's, it's basically, it's a really good course. It actually has, it teaches you how to recognize signs of potential human trafficking. And so, when you have more confidence about what you might see and what you might think is a case of human trafficking, whether it's sex trafficking or labor trafficking, when you have confidence that what you're seeing might be an issue, you are more likely to call law enforcement. And law enforcement needs to hear from all of us in order to actually work and, and fight against it.
Okay. What are some other things that you say you got, you've done? I'm sorry, you said you've been in seats since 2018, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. So, 2022, four years. What are some other things that you've been able to do for District 3?
One thing that I'm really proud of is, you know, North Monroe is, is basically within the entire District 3. And since I started four years ago, the, the blueprint project to fund North Monroe improvements was not funded. And in 2021, we were able to get that project fully funded. We've also been able to get funding for improving and widening Tharp Street. Also, another thing that I know we've talked about, and we'll talk about more here, is, is the fact that we have a lot of poverty and food insecurity in Leon County. I used to be CEO of Second Harvest of the Big Bend, which is the regional food bank here. And when I was there, we, we had a record-breaking 10 million meals distributed to people within the Big Bend. Really an incredible organization, but it taught me and it showed me firsthand how, how severe the problem of hunger and food insecurity is in the county. One, and one thing I did as a county commissioner is I partnered with Second Harvest. I'm no longer part of Second Harvest, but I partnered with them and urged the county and the city and the Children's Services Council to work together on a new program that identifies the 10 hungriest neighborhoods in Leon County, and then meets with those neighbors. We aren't doing something to that neighborhood. We're working with the neighbors to figure out ways to conquer the barriers of food insecurity. If we can take those 10 hungriest neighborhoods and, and help them get better access to nutritious food, that helps those families, that helps those neighborhoods, and helps the entire county. I led that. I initiated that program, worked with Second Harvest to develop that, and then came to my county commission colleagues and encouraged them to, to approve it, and they did.
Thank you. Now, Joey, this is gonna go to you because these projects that Rick has been working on are pretty large projects. So, it would take a lot of time for him to get these things completed. What, what is it that you're seeing that you might be saying is not enough, why you feel the need to, to want to take this seat? Oops, sorry, you're on mute. Let's go. Sorry.
Well, you know, is specifically, you look at the North Monroe corridor, and like I mentioned a little bit in my opening statement, it looks like Atlanta. I mean, it's, the homelessness is out of control. You have people going through drug trafficking, sex trafficking, and you know, it's really disappointing to hear that we had all those arrests for human trafficking going on on North Monroe corridor. That means that the current commissioner allowed it to get to that point where we had to have that done, right? Like, so we can't start, you know, giving out credit because you dug a hole and then you filled it up, right? So, here's the better idea. Let's not dig the hole. So, that, that, that's a really big thing there. The Tharp Street, that really, really hurts me to see that we don't have that, that funding yet, and the fact that we don't have those sidewalks. And that, and that comes back to that blueprint money that was spent on the stadium. The Tharp Street was, is a project that is in that list, and where I feel like it was of a higher priority than the stadium. Now, the stadium money was already on the blueprint list to be approved, but I feel like the stadium took a priority over Tharp Street, and I didn't like that. I mean, there are parts on Tharp Street between Mission and Ocala where it is literally a dirt path because people have been walking so much along their street, and there's no sidewalk. And so, I feel like that would have been a greater need to the community than giving, you know, $20 million and $27 million, if you amortize it, to Dope Campbell Stadium. And so, we, we, we gotta have a commissioner that is looking out for the needs of the district. And that's why I'm running, because when I knock doors, they say, you align with my values, my beliefs, and that's why I'm gonna vote for you.
Thank you for that, Joey. And I'm gonna allow Commissioner Rick Minor to respond. But let me ask you, did, did you vote yes or no for Dope Campbell?
Initially, I supported, initially, I supported it because FSU is, is the largest economic driver in, in the county. But after that first vote, the public became a lot more aware of the issue, and people reached out to me. Everybody reached out to me and basically said, listen, we, we, we're Seminoles. We, we got our education at FSU. We love FSU, but we don't want our blueprint taxpayer dollars going to that project. And they gave me very good reasons for it. You know, the, the opportunity cost is too high. You know, Joey's right when we say we've got too much crime and too much poverty and affordable, and, and a shortage of affordable housing. He's right. That's one reason why I'm running, why I'm running again for county commission. The opportunity cost is too high. And the other thing is that FSU, more than any other entity in Leon County, has the ability to raise that money on their own. They're already raising $100 million for the stadium. Raising $20 million isn't easy for most anybody, unless you're Elon Musk. But, but FSU can do that better than just about anybody else in the county, including Blueprint. So, I basically, you know, one thing I do on the county commission is I take great pride in listening to the people that I work for. I work for the people that live in Leon County and the District 3. And when they spoke to me and said, listen, we don't want our dollars going to that project, I listened, and I changed course. I, I announced before the next meeting and said, I'm not gonna vote for this. I'm gonna vote to rescind. And from that point on, I've been against the Dope Campbell Stadium funding, for the reasons that I stated. And you know, I, one thing that, on the county commission, you, you, you've gotta listen to the people that you work for. And that's one thing I've done. And standing up to, you know, the big power brokers to do that, you gotta do it. And I, you know, I, I think that's a good example of me basically following the will of the people and, and doing the best thing that's good, doing what's best for this community.
Thank you.
Can I give a quick response to that? I didn't hear if you said yes or no.
Sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
So, one of the things that people are not talking about, one, that vote, and I said it at the WFU debate, right, it's, the rules that govern the meeting are very technical, right? And so, they are governed by Robert's Rules of Order, right? And so, when you go through Robert's Rules of Order, there are motions, there are primary amendments and secondary amendments. And so, you need to know the rules of the game that you're playing when you're sitting on that commission. And so, one of the things that I would have done, okay, because when you look at what happened with the vote, Christine Dozier made the motion, then the late Jimbo Jackson made what he called a substitute motion, but what it really was, was a primary amendment. You can also make what is called a secondary amendment to the primary amendment. And so, you could have made any motion. You could have taken out Dope. You could have just said, I only wanna vote on Dope. You could have done any of that. But that wasn't said, right? Everybody was just sitting there on their hands, and so, we needed someone who knew the rules of the game, and I'm the person who knows those rules. And so, I would have made that motion, and I would have said, no, we're not going to sit here and lump all this stuff together. We're gonna vote straight up and down, yes, on Dope Campbell Stadium. But you gotta have the rules of the game to be able to get that done.
How do you know the rules of the game?
I read the book.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, so I wanna ask about... Sorry, my notes are everywhere. We talked about food insecurity. Well, let me ask you then, this is to Joey. What, oh, the obvious question, sorry. It's right there in front of me. I wanted to ask you then, if you were to get into office, what would you be doing different from what Rick Minor's been focusing on?
Um, I, I would have a heavier focus on North Monroe. I was just out knocking doors today, and people are really concerned about the homelessness. That's, that's the thing that they, we talk about all the time, is the homelessness. And we've talked about that a lot already. But the other thing that I really wanna talk about is the affordable housing, because that's where we need to be shifting our attention. So, we gotta be able to do two things at one time. But the affordable housing is important because we're bringing in these jobs, right? We brought in Amazon, although I don't agree with how that was done, and we'll talk about that later. But we brought in Amazon, brought in Crunch, so we created, creating jobs, but these jobs, again, are only paying $30,000. You have homes that are costing $200,000, $250,000, even $300,000 homes, and there's no one that can afford those homes on a $30,000 income. So, right now, we have an affordable housing shortage, and so, we need to make sure that we are working with the city to be able to make sure that we are providing that allotment of housing that we need because we're bringing in jobs and people are moving in from outside of the city so that they can be able to live here. Because it, it, there's no purpose in providing a job if you don't have anywhere to stay. And so, we gotta work, and it's a balance.
My follow-up to that would be, what would be your idea to deal with this affordable housing? How, how do you see that getting done?
So, I'm a big proponent of infield. I don't wanna see sprawl. So, we need to look at areas that are already inside the city limits. And if we can, you know, build there or talk to those developers to say, hey, let's purchase this land so that we can have some affordable housing, that's what I would do. You could do vouchers, which would be a short-term stopgap. I know vouchers aren't looked at as highly as they used to be, although they did create the middle class back in the post World War II era. But vouchers would be a good way, and the other way is to incentivize the developers to give them an incentive to create the affordable housing units that we need. But we're about 12,000 units short on affordable housing.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay, so Rick, go ahead and, what, you can interject.
Yeah, thanks RJ. I, I think Joey's gotta start attending our county commission meetings to hear what's going on. We've actually got quite a bit going on on affordable housing. It is a big issue. We actually, it's not 12,000, it's 11,500 additional affordable housing units are required by the year 2045 in Leon County. We had a, we had a workshop, it's my turn, we had a workshop in February at 2 o'clock, so it's a time that Joey could have attended, where we actually had a joint workshop with the city and the county. And we instructed staff to work with the Florida Housing Coalition to come up with a new inclusionary housing ordinance. The current one, there's one for the city. There's not one for the county yet. But the current one at the city does not have incentives that are great enough to convince developers, the private sector, to take advantage of those. So, we directed the Florida Housing Coalition to go and work with our staff, and also reach out to the private sector to find real motivations, density bonuses, thresholds, that would really convince the private sector to build affordable housing. It's not working now because no private sector entities are taking advantage of it. We also, at that workshop, we, we created a new agreement between the county and the city for ship funds, the State Housing Initiative Partnership. Those funds are basically allowed, they, they allow local government to help finance more affordable housing construction. And so, that agreement basically helps consolidate our efforts between the city and the county so we can use those monies more effectively. And then finally, we're, we're also forming a new CDC partnership with an entity here in Leon County to help build a more affordable housing. So, yeah, affordable housing is a big issue. We need 11,500 by 2045, new additional units. But we're doing a lot of work. We're laying the groundwork now to make some real progress and real change. You know, these are big, heavy issues, and you can't solve them with a snap of your fingers. They didn't, they didn't emerge immediately, and we're not gonna be able to solve them immediately. But we're taking solid steps, real steps, to accomplish the, the types of successes that we need to accomplish.
Okay. Rick, Joey also mentioned the homelessness problem. Have you noticed it?
Oh, yeah, very much so. In fact, homelessness is a problem. It's all throughout the county, and actually, it's around the country. It's a national trend, unfortunately, but it doesn't absolve us to solve the problem here locally. We, as local elected officials, we have a responsibility to deal with homelessness here. For those of you that, that travel along North Monroe frequently, back in, during the pandemic, the Carney Center, one of our homeless shelters, closed because of COVID. There were about 320 people that were homeless that were shifted from the Carney Center to hotels in I-10 North Monroe.
That's your district.
And so, what, what I did is I, I, I took the initiative. I, I called Rick Carney, who runs, you know, he's basically the, presides over the Carney Center, and said, listen, we, we need to help you accelerate opening the Carney Center so that you can provide, you can bring folks back to the Carney Center and provide the services that they need to help them get to stable housing. It's not happening in hotel rooms. You need to bring them back into the Carney Center. He agreed, and because of my call and my work with him, he accelerated those folks that are struggling with homelessness to be, uh, transition from the hotel rooms back to the Carney Center. That happened because of me. Another thing that we did jointly with the county and the city is we used federal cares dollars, which came from the federal government to help us provide relief to COVID. We dedicated $6.2 million from the city and the county specifically to our homelessness reduction efforts. That's a history, that's a historic level of funding going to that issue. And we do that because we know it's an issue. We see it increasing. I mean, I mean, Joey and I travel on the same streets that, you know, you know, we see the same things. But what I don't think he's able to, to tell you is that we're doing a lot of work on it. We're making a lot of strides. And you know, of course, there's other elements of homelessness too, and poverty, which is, which is helping to develop the workforce and help develop skills in people that, that need new skills development so they can market themselves more to, to potential employers. And, and also the food insecurity thing that I told you about too. If you can help a family have better access to nutritious food, that's one of the most cost-effective... that's one of the most cost-effective ways to help a family start to lift itself out of poverty. So, um, homelessness is a big issue, but I just mentioned some of the big things that we're doing to, to address it, as well as some of the elements that are related to homelessness that also help the entire community too.
Okay, so Joey, I mean, Rick has been pleading and, or saying, you know, in numerous ways of how hard they've been working, and that the very things that you are saying are issues that they have on the table right now. So what, what is your response to someone who can, who feels that way, who feels like, well, Rick is doing the best that he can do, and he has all these issues on, you know, in their agenda? What would you say to that person?
Well, first of all, it's just, it's just not true that homelessness is, is getting better. Like, you know, anyone who rides up and down their street will tell you that. There is no one that can say in the past four years that this has gotten better than when he took office. And so we just have to be real about that. Like, we just got to be honest. And again, these excuses of I'm trying, that's not good enough. You have to have a championship mentality, okay? Champions do not make excuses. Champions get the job done, right? And so when you want to put somebody in office, you got to put somebody with a winning mentality and a championship mentality.
Well, I just want to clarify that. I, I, if you feel that he said he's trying, I was saying that he said he's doing, so.
Anybody that is going up and down on that street will tell you that that's not true, right? It looks worse than Atlanta right now. I didn't hear your question, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So what I was gonna, what I'm asking is if you can do something different with these very same issues that he's dealing with. So he's done food insecurity. Hold on, so I want to make sure we cover. He's worked on food insecurity, which he's brought results for. He's been able to deal with the, uh, the crime in regards to trafficking that he has results for. He's been able to improve the streets off Monroe, that Monroe corridor, which was a major, uh, improvement that we all see in access that he can show results for. So what would you do differently? Oh, and also he mentioned, uh, being able to get those homeless, uh, people who are staying at the hotels in you all's district from the hotel off of Monroe and back into the Carney Center, he said that he's done. So, so he, he's been able to show, he's saying this, uh, meaning he can show proof of that because they're no longer there. So if you can do anything different from what he's been doing, how, what would you be doing?
Well, again, for, for homelessness, actually, they were doing the right thing, the right concept of the housing first concept for the homelessness, right? So when you're talking about a lot of people who are homeless, they have a lot of mental health issues, and so getting them in a stable environment, and I mean their own room, is very key for mental health. Then you can provide the treatment that they need, whether they have substance abuse, uh, or the continued mental health aspect. But ultimately, my plan would be to try to help them get jobs, to get them out of that temporary housing into permanent housing of their own. When it comes to food insecurity, I see that all the time. Uh, I've been giving back and volunteering at Mana on Meridian. Uh, and they do give out food every Thursday, Saturday of the month. This past week in July, I'm going to do it, uh, coming up in August too, we gave out three hundred bags of, uh, food to families in need. And usually in July, that number is around one fifty. You usually don't see the three hundred number until you hit around November, December. And that means that we're still struggling with the effects of COVID. And so we need to be doing a better job as a county commissioner of addressing the current needs of the residents. And the other thing you learn is that even though we're giving out these bags, it's not enough. People are going to two food banks and sometimes even a third food bank just to be able to make ends meet, but nobody.
I hear you, I hear you, and I'm not saying that you're saying anything wrong, but I don't want you to miss the question. What I want to know is what would you do differently to deal with these problems? Because you've been saying a long list of a lot of the problems, but how, you know, going to the details of how would you, you know, change the trajectory of these issues so that they're no longer an issue?
We've got to, we've got to reach out to the community and do, and be more community active. Like, we need to know, we need to have a database, a central database, uh, the families that are in need, and the families that want need, and be able to provide direct contact to them. What are your current needs? Here's how we can help you. And right now, that's not being done, but it's got to be direct contact. And it would involve knocking doors. That's something I'm very good at, and I will be willing to do that as a commissioner too, because I love that engagement. But it's got to be a list, it's got to have name, address, phone number, this is what you need, okay, it's going to take us two days to get you this, can you survive for two days? Okay, one day, one day, let's get it to you. Let's get you to help you need immediately so you can stop this hurt. We don't want to see families hurting, uh, even though COVID is over, there's still lingering effects that we're still seeing today.
Okay, all right, so let's bring, uh, Rick into this conversation. Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, thanks. I, I think Joey's saying as much as he can say, you know, about the issue. You know, there are about eight hundred, roughly speaking, it, it fluctuates from, from time to time, but there are about eight hundred people that are struggling with homelessness in the county. And about seventy percent of them, seventy percent, could be transitioning to stable housing, but for maybe one or two different things. And by that, what I mean is, um, you know, maybe they've got some type of prescription medication that they're not being able to get. You know, that, um, or maybe they've got some legal issues that prevent them from getting past the interview stage at a, at a job interview, right? There, there's rather, there, seventy percent of them have just maybe one or two relatively, relatively overcomeable, or, you know, things that can be addressed, uh, with that. So, you know, that six point two million dollars that we invested, both the city and the county, into homelessness efforts, that helps us. That helps us take a look at those eight hundred people and work with each one of them, just, just, just what Joey's saying, he doesn't know what's happening, but it is, sitting down with every single one of them, because every single individual that is struggling right now has a specific need to them, right? It just, we're not cookie cutters. Human beings are not cookie cutters. So, you know, we are doing that. And that six point two million dollars is going to take us to those caseworkers that can meet with these folks one-on-one and help solve their problems and, and transition those, many of them, not all, but many of them will be able to find a transition from where they currently are to stable housing. And then many of them also will find gain, gainful employment. So, I mean, I, I think Joey said all he can about this, but there's a lot going on. Um, and he has.
When you say we, who is we?
We, when I say we, I, it's just a habit. I mean, it's, it's the county commission, it's the city commission, it's, it's the Big Ben, um, Homeless Coalition, it's the Big Ben Continuum of Care. The Big Ben Continuum of Care is a network of nonprofits that are dedicated to, uh, addressing poverty and homelessness. And they, they meet regularly. I'm, I'm actually on the, on the board, and so I, I, I participate in, 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 and work with them on the issues that, that we're dealing with. So, you know, homelessness is a very complex issue, and there are lots of different factors into it. But you've got a large network of people, uh, that are working very hard on this. We, we, meaning county, city, and all these nonprofits and volunteers that are, that are working hard to make a difference. So for anyone that, out there that's listening, that, that wants to get involved in helping, you know, with the homelessness, uh, issue, attend the Big Ben Continuum of Care meeting and, and listen to the, the, the meeting as it, as it goes. And there are a lot of opportunities for anyone here to get involved and, and really make a difference, um, on, on helping people find stable housing.
So Rick, how reachable is it, uh, for, as Joey's saying, to go door-to-door? How effective is probably the better way to, to phrase that question? To actually go door-to-door and see the actual needs of people?
There, there are other, there are lots of ways to do it. You know, when I worked at, at Second Harvest, the food bank, you know, we actually worked with, um, a hundred and thirty-five different agencies, meaning, you know, some were churches, nonprofits, soup kitchens. We would deliver the food to them, and then they, these hundred and thirty-five agencies, they would actually, you know, provide the food to folks that were coming in to, to get it. And so that's a highly effective, highly efficient way to reach a lot of people. You know, you can reach ten thousand people a month, uh, by using that communication infrastructure, right? The hundred and thirty-five churches and nonprofits and soup kitchens that constantly, constantly, uh, talk with and interact with folks that are really struggling for either nutritious food or, or clothes or, or, you know, anything, right? And so that's another good avenue to do it. And, and, and the other way is just, these nonprofits and the, the people that work there, these are people that, I mean, they work their tails off. And they aren't doing it for the money because they aren't paid very much, but they work their, their, their derriers off, just because they want to make a difference. And, you know, it's, it's really inspiring to go to these Continuum of Care meetings, these networks of these nonprofits, because these people are in it, they're talented, they know what's going on, and they're working really hard every single day to try to help improve people's lives.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to open it up. I'm going to give it to Joey. I know he wanted to say something before we move on to the next question.
Just really quickly, like, you know, listening to the current commissioner. Okay, I don't know what he said, but I, I did have a moment to think. But when you hear him start speaking, it's clear that he has never talked to someone that was homeless or talked to a family that was homeless. One of the biggest encampments that we have in Leon County is sitting right behind the Walmart on Sessions, um, and North Monroe. And you go back there, and what's going to really hurt you is you're going to see homeless kids. That's gonna, that is going to hurt your heart to see that. And so, um, I don't encourage you to do it because it's not for the weak of heart, but when you actually talk to these people, it's not like a one or two thing, like, it, it's a comp, it's a very complex issue. We got to have somebody in here who's willing to put that legwork in to solve this issue, because that's what the people want to get done. It's the biggest issue that people talk about when I knock doors, is they want someone to fix this homelessness problem, and I'm going to do it.
Thank you. Um, so let me ask you, Joey, do you have any experience with mental health?
Yeah, so I work for the Florida Abuse Hotline, and so every day I deal with, uh, Baker Acts, I deal with Marchman Acts, I deal with the criteria for those. And, you know, when you learn about the Baker Acts, you know, it's, Baker Acts are good and they're, and they're bad, okay? If you are having a temporary psychotic episode, a Baker Act is good to resettle you and calm you down. But a lot of times, and we receive a lot of calls where kids are like fighting their parents, these are ongoing issues. And so a Baker Act isn't enough when it keeps happening continuously. So we need to reevaluate, um, the Baker Act to see, you know, can we add a stipulation in there to say, maybe you need longer treatment and more than just to be settled down? Because a lot of times, and when you talk to, uh, families who have these, these problems, they'll tell you, a lot of times they do calm them down, but then they get riled back up at a, at a moment's notice, and they can't control, um, the person. And then when they call law enforcement sometime, they come out and depending on their age, if they refuse service, then they can't give them anything unless they say that they are a threat to themselves or they are a threat to somebody else. And so we really got to work with providing better mental health services, uh, for families in need. And sometimes a Baker Act or a Marchman Act is just not enough to get the job done.
Understood. Rick Miner, same question to you.
We, I, I agree with Joey on this. We, we do need to invest more in mental health. You know, it's a, it's a state-level issue as well as a local issue. One thing that, um, one issue that we've got here in Leon County is that a, a lot of people that are struggling with mental health issues are in the Leon County jail. And if we were able to invest more and, and, and have, and give them the, the types of resources and, 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 and assistance that they truly need, they wouldn't be there. And not only was that better for the folks that are currently in jail right now, uh, but it's also better for, for the county and, and the citizens in terms of the bottom line. It's much more expensive to have someone in our Leon County jail than it is, um, you know, as an outpatient and, and getting the type of mental health assistance that they need. So, um, yes.
Sorry, go ahead, yes, yes.
So, um, so we, you know, it's, it's been a state issue for a long time. I did a lot of, I used to develop a lot of public policy at the state level and, uh, and it's, 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 it's been a tragic need for a long time at the state level, but, but also here at the local level too. We, we need to do.
I want to make sure I, I ask the question again. So, uh, do you personally have any experience with mental health? Like, uh, when I say experience, like, have you ever had to deal with anything on your own, uh, about mental health? It could be, it could be anything.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, thanks for repeating the question. I mean, um, yeah, I mean, I've had some members of my family that, that have required various degrees of, of, you know, counseling. And so I, I think most families, I think most people have got some type of either direct or indirect exposure, you know? I mean, it's, it's one of those issues in this country where it's prevalent, but not many people talk about it. Yet we all are exposed to it to some degree, right? So my answer to you is, is yes. I mean, I, I've got, I've got close-hand experience with some family members that have struggled over, over various issues over the years.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question, and I don't know if that, if this is how it works, so forgive me if this question is out of, uh, if it's out of context, but, uh, the Walani project that happened, did you have a vote on that?
Yes, I did.
Can you share with us how you voted?
Yes, I voted in support of it. Um, one, let me go ahead and explain Walani real quick. The Walani property is about four thousand eight hundred acres, and it's all one big piece of property owned by, by one owner. That owner, without going, coming to the county or city and without having any type of master plan, had the freedom, because, you know, they've got their property rights, to basically sell that property off in different chunks, however they wanted. And then once those property, uh, parcels were, were owned by another developer, they could develop whatever they wanted on them with no rhyme or reason, with no master plan whatsoever. I supported Walani because it allows us, per agreement with the, with the owner of the property, to have a master plan that basically takes a look at the entire lay of that land and makes sure that as, as our community grows, and we know, we know we need to grow, you know, not just the eleven thousand five hundred affordable housing units, but we also need to grow by our population at large too. So as we grow, we now have an agreement with the owner to grow in a very, um, uh, methodical way that maximizes the resources as well as minimize sprawl. You know, we, the way, the way the property is situated, we actually grow in the core first and then slowly move out over time. And, and the property owner didn't have to, didn't have to do any of that unless we had the master plan agreement.
Was a part of that agreement, uh, was affordable housing a part of that agreement?
Yes, it's part of it, it's part of it. Another thing that I, I'm really proud of is that if you look at the northeast section of Walani, we now have a, it, it gets technical quickly, but there's a, there's an open space transfer credit, um, idea now, with that, to put it short, you know, briefly, it basically encourages the, the development of a passive park in the northeast part of, of Walani. That would not have happened had it not been for me introducing the idea. It wasn't my idea. Doctor, the late Dr. Pam Hall is the one that came up with the idea, presented it to me. But I introduced that idea to my colleagues during the meeting. It was during the pandemic, so it was virtual. And then while the meeting was in progress, I drew up a PowerPoint slide, um, to, to explain what it was, and actually, I, I've got it right here. I'm not going to explain it, but that's what I drew, you know, right at the meeting on PowerPoint, and then presented that slide to my colleagues to explain what it was, and I was able to get them to support it. So that in my mind is real leadership. It's basically introducing something to your colleagues. It doesn't matter where the idea comes from. But because I introduced that and got it passed, we now have a mechanism to have that passive park in the northeast quadrant of, uh, Walani.
Thank you. Okay, so let me get Joey, uh, serious, to contribute to this conversation.
Well, first of all, if you had to draw it up, that means you weren't prepared, you had to do it during the meeting, so it should have been done before the meeting. Uh, that's the first thing. But the second thing is, um, when we look at that Walani project, I would, I would not have voted for it, okay? I would not have voted for that project. One, because it was killing a bunch of trees, we're cutting down trees, even some of these canopy trees that are supposed to be protected. And it appears that, you know, as, as long as you have the right lawyer, you can cut down any tree you want. And so, uh, it was disappointing to see the current commissioner, uh, vote for that, vote for that project. But I'll tell you the real reason why he voted for it, right? Because the people who fund his campaign, they are the people that bought the land. And so when you are bought and paid for by Talcor, guess what you're going to do? Whatever they tell you to do. So we have to have someone in that seat who is independent, who works for people instead of people who work for developers.
It's up for you to respond.
That, I don't know where he's getting that, that's complete bogus. The, the property owners still own the property, uh, but.
That's not true.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is.
Okay, so research has to be done, guys. They gave us homework, they gave us.
Gotta do the research.
Okay, so, um, I will find out, and of course, make sure y'all following at Community Builders three sixty. It's a lot of things that have been brought up in, uh, these forums, and we look forward to adding that content for the community to be, uh, fully informed when they get that ballot. But okay, guys, so let's switch the conversation a little bit, because we are running down on time. And so I want to ask about, uh, Commissioner Miner, your vote for the resolution for Roe versus Wade. Um, can you share what you, what vote you made?
Thanks for, RJ, that's a great question. There actually was not a resolution for Roe v. Wade, um, at the county commission. But I, um, I was, uh, extremely disappointed when the Supreme Court overturned it. I believe in a woman's right to choose. I believe that, uh, uh, women should be in control of their own bodies and have the ability and the, it, it's the right. But our nation needs to recognize that it's a right to decide, um, what happens to your own body. So I'm emphatically in support of a woman's right to choose. What happens to your own body. So I'm emphatically in support of a woman's right to choose.
Okay, so what would you say to the person that says, well, so much emphasis is being made on. The ability for women to, uh, to have these abortions specifically with those who ha- who have the abortions. Because they've been raped by a family member or violated might be a better word, uh, by a family member. But there's not enough emphasis on the person that has committed that crime. No one is giving much attention to that person. Um, what would you say to that person?
To the person who committed the crime?
So basically, the, what's happening is there's a lot of people that feel specifically those who support the Roe versus Wade. Uh, decision. They would say, well, so many, so many people are saying, oh, it's not right. It's a woman's choice and so, and so have you. Uh, but there, a lot of the abortions that are happening, that would be the right reasons for abortion, quote unquote, right reasons for abortion. Because a lot of times abortions are being made because women either are the only, you know, the, their partner has walked out on them. They may feel like they can't afford it, yada, yada, you know, all kinds of reasons. But the only reason that a lot of people outside of, uh, dangerous pregnancies. The only reasons why people who are against Roe, Roe versus Wade would feel like it's fair to allow women to have abortion. Would be because they would have been, uh, violated by, uh, someone in their family or just been violated however way. Um, but in those cases, if that was the case, that never seems to be the emphasis to focus on the violator. It's still just the fact that, well, the woman should be able to have the abortion. But the problem is those who have committed the crime, they get to either walk away or walk away with minimal punishment. So I hope the context made it clear, but what would you say to someone who?
Yeah, I think I understand your question. I mean, anyone who's guilty of, of a crime, whether, you know, sexual assault, rape. I mean, they, they've got to be held accountable, you know, our, our, our justice system needs to prosecute them. And, uh, take them to trial and, and if they're convicted, you know, send them to jail. With, with regard to the other element of this, you know, I, I, let me respond, it wasn't part of your question, but let me just say that. I don't think government should make decisions for women on, on, on their specific situation when it comes to this. I think reproductive health is a, is a right that, um, women and, and men, you know, uh, for themselves should, should make decisions on their own about. Um, you know, government should not get, should not intervene in that. Gov- government should not. Happens, government should not be getting into your personal private life and deciding whether or not you, through your actions. Have, uh, have deemed yourself worthy of, of, of an abortion. I mean, that in my mind is up to a woman's right to choose and, you know, we can never know fully. What a woman's specific situation is and the circumstances that have led her to a certain point. You know, and, and I for one, don't think government should be getting involved in that at a very personal intimate level. And then trying to make a decision for that woman against, which would, which could be against her will.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so Joey, your thoughts on that?
Um, so, uh, like Commissioner Martin said, he's correct. The county did not have that resolution. That was only the city. Um, but I am for a woman's right to choose. I think a woman who decides to have an abortion is making probably the toughest decision that she will ever make in her life. And it's a very emotional decision and we need to be able to make sure that we are respecting her right to choose and her ability to confer with her doctor. To say, what is the best decision for me and what is the best decision for this unborn child? And so we need to make sure that we are protecting a woman's right to choose. I, I'm raised by a single mother, okay? I'm raised by a single mother, so I know, you know, what it's like for you to have to fight for yourself and you, some people aren't always fighting for you. Uh, she raised me and my twin brother, uh, and we were, I'll just say this real quickly, we were such angels growing up that she decided not to have any more children. Like, that's how well behaved we were that she said, nope, no more children. Um, but yeah, a woman's right to choose is, is very important to me. And I will be probably one of the strongest advocates that you've ever seen, uh, for women's rights. Like it. It matters to me. It really does.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're winding down, so I have a, a few more questions. Um, and then I'll let you all go for the evening. Thank you so much for staying, uh, this long. I really appreciate your time more than I could really, words could really express. But I'd like to talk to you, Rick, about, uh, this training. It was a report that was released, uh, yesterday in the paper about the police, uh, being trained by a war criminal. Uh, that goes by the name Eddie Gallagher. It was released yesterday. Uh, are you aware of this?
I am, I am.
And what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's very disappointing. Uh, you know, the, the county commission, the county government doesn't have jurisdiction over the Tallahassee Police Department. Or the police chief. Uh, but I read the story and was very, um, very disappointed. My understanding is that, uh, Eddie Gallagher was not convicted. In fact, he was exonerated by President Trump, which. I, I also think was a bad move, but, um, I think it sends a wrong message to anyone on the, on the force.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joey, were you aware about that?
Yeah, I also, um, read that article and I'm familiar with the Eddie Gallagher story, um, as well. And I was disappointed. Uh, I. It bothers me as to the lack of transparency of how these things get to a point where they happen. Right? And the county doesn't have any jurisdiction. Um, Commissioner Minor is right about that. That's, it's more of a city issue. But it's showing that we have a transparency issue between our local law enforcement in the city and the residents. And so I feel that any government entity should never be trying to hide anything from the public. And if you are part of any act to try to hide something from the public, that is the first sign that you are doing something wrong. When you are in the public and trying to hide something from them. And so I would just like to see more transparency, um, about these, uh, training exercises that are taking place.
Okay, so my follow-up question would be, uh, when stuff like that is happening, even when it's outside of your control. Uh, what can you all do to protect your constituents, um, especially when outside your control? Uh, Rick Minor.
Yeah, well, you know, um. One thing I will do is, is often if, i- if I have a relationship with the, uh, with the, with the other party that has. Taken place or committed this, um, even if I don't have a relationship with them, I'll build a relationship and, and call them up and meet with them and express my disappointment. You know, that's, um, it's, it's part of how this works. I mean, within Leon County, we've got different levels of government. You've got the, you know, federal, state, school board, city commission, county commission, you know, and e- each one of those has a specific jurisdiction. Um, often there are things that happen that are outside my formal jurisdiction as a county commissioner. But I have to be able to, I, in order to be effective, I have to be able to, and I do, reach out to those folks and express my opinion. And where I can make suggestions on how to correct what I believe is a mistake. Um, and this also happens in other ways too. When, um, when the city of Tallahassee was looking at putting a new police headquarters down in the south side. I told the, I, I told the city, I said, listen, it should go in the south side. I mean, it, it'd be a shot in the arm for that part of, of our community. It really needs it. But it turned out that a lot of the, the neighbors in that area didn't want it. Um, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, but basically the decision was not to go there. The other alternative location was in District Three. Um, and so I actually said, well, I, I truly believe it'd be better for all of us overall in the community as well as the south side if it were on the south side. But we would be very happy to have it in District Three. Um, and I spoke to neighbors about it, talked to the city about it. And, um, and, and worked hard to kind of let their voices be known that if the headquarters were to be. Established in District Three, it'd be a very welcome place for us. And, um, and I was elated when the decision was made after considerable public input to, uh, have the headquarters placed there.
Okay, Joey, uh, what would you, how would you be able to protect your community? Uh, from things that affect the community, even if it's out of your control as county commissioner? One moment.
That, that's, oh, sorry. That's a, that's a very good question. Um, and so. One of the things that we have to understand is even though you sit on the county commission, you do work a lot with the city agencies. Uh, you work a lot with the state agencies and the federal agencies and building those relationships is so key so that you can reach out to those people and say. Hey, like what, what's going on here? But more importantly, so you can talk to the people affected. Um, in this situation, it was, it was a training exercise, so there aren't a lot of, you know, victims. But there will be other instances where there could be people affected who may not, um, who, who, who may not live in your district. And you can still go and be a, a ear to them and be a comforter to them in their time of need. And I think that's a really important part of being a commissioner is showing up. I mean, that is half the battle and being commissioner is showing up and showing that you care and it means a lot to people when you do. Um, that's why, you know, when we talk about the knocking on doors and we talk about, uh, getting things done in the community. Half the battle is being able to show up. And so I'm gonna be a commissioner that will always be present for you.
Okay, uh, so I, I wanna ask my last question actually, which is about economic development. But, you know, Ricky, you kind of posed a really good point and I wanna ask about this right, really quickly. Which is about the police, uh, police station being located on the south side. Uh, do you have any idea of what some of the concerns were? Do you, do you see where the threat might have been, um, for this south side and on what the concerns were?
You know, um, you know, Joey talks about being present and, uh, you know, I, I agree with him. And, uh, you know, I, I've got a history of, of going to public meetings where the commissioners aren't even expected to go. Um, again, I'm on the county commission and this is a city commission jurisdiction on the location of, of the TPD headquarters. There were two community meetings held in the south side to discuss with the neighbors on whether or not the TPD headquarters should be on the south side. I went to both of those meetings and sat there and, and was there for the entire time, both meetings. Um, because I wanted to hear from the neighbors. Now, this is something, the, the TPD headquarters was not anything I was gonna vote on. I, I, in, in the eyes of the city, I'm, I'm just another citizen lending my feedback in, in, in preference. But I went to those meetings because it's important and, and at that meeting, yes, I heard people say, we don't want the police in our backyard. We don't wanna be feel like we're being monitored, you know, the TP, and they had various things to say about TPD and. And, and, and the fears of, of TPD. You know, there are neighborhoods in this town that, that will not call the police no matter what they hear going on next door. Because they're afraid of, of what might happen when they show up. And there are big trust issues, big trust issues within many neighborhoods and law enforcement. And, um, and, you know, and, and those were demonstrated yet again at those, at those meetings I went to.
So what are your thoughts on that, knowing that, the trust issues that we have?
It's, it's a hard, long, um, effort to, to reverse that, right? When, when you, when you lose trust with anybody, whether it's an organization or just with your wife or family or whatever. It takes a long time to build that trust back, right? Hard work. And that's just what we need to do here too. I mean, you know, TPD has, um, has, has people within the department. Whose sole focus is, is to reach out to neighbors and, and, and try to put the pieces together and build that trust again. It's hard work and it takes a long time, but they've got folks on staff and, and, and officers that are working on that. Their full-time job is to, is to go into neighborhoods and play basketball with the kids. And, and build those relationships up, right? And, and slowly build that trust. Um, your last forum, you asked about defunding the police, you know, I, I disagree with that, you know? Crime is such a high, uh, at a high level here in Leon County. I, I can't in good conscience reduce funding for the sheriff's office. Which is in my jurisdiction. Um, but what we need to do is make sure that our sheriff's office and our TPD. Uh, are, are trustworthy, that in the eyes of, of these neighbors. Um, and we've got a, we've got a great Sheriff McNeil at, at the sheriff's office that's doing that. Um, but that's really what we need to do. We need to focus on slowly building that trust up. Because, um, that's what we, there, there's no other option. You need to have the neighborhoods. You, you need to have law enforcement demonstrate that they are worthy of trust from, uh, from neighbors.
Okay, Joey, how about you? Uh, what would you say, um, about the issue with? Well, first I'm under, what is, what do you understand about, uh, the concern for the police department moving to the south side? Um, and then the second part of that question is, what ways do you see, what ideas would you have or strategies might be a better term? Uh, to help develop trust for the police department, if you have any ideas? One second.
Oh, uh, thank you for the question. Um, so, you know, we talk about the south side. I don't know why we sugarcoat this. We just need to say it, right? That's the black community, okay? And so growing up as an African American, I know that issue better than my opponent, okay? As much as he will call somebody and tell them anything or listen to them, he'll never be black, okay? I'm unapologetically black. I know what it's like to be, um, harassed by the police. I know what it's like to feel like you are racially profiled. I know what that is like, okay? And so, um, I, I, I know their concern about having the police in your backyard and feeling, this isn't gonna make me safe. This is gonna put a target on my back. I, I know that, right? I've lived that, okay?
So what would you suggest to, uh, help improve the trust? What do you think that can be done?
So here's something people, the thing people aren't talking about. TPD has a negative, there's a perception they have a negative relationship with the city. But Leon County has a very positive relationship with the city. Those are the two dynamics. We're talking about the county, you talk about TPD. And so one of the things that they did when I was growing up, the police officers used to come to our baseball games and they would. They would talk to us after the game, just, hey, I'm Officer Smith. Uh, I just wanted to, you know, let you know I'm in your district. Um, you look at what used to happen in the old days when they used to have the beat cops. The beat cops used to go door to door and introduce themselves and say, hey, this is my beat. I wanna get to know you. I feel your police officer should know when a baby's born, when you, when somebody got married, when there's a death in the family. Um, when somebody graduated from high school or college, like they should know all of these things so they can have an understanding of their community. Once you know your community, you can serve your community. And so those are the things that I would like to see, like really get in depth into the community. I know they do a lot of, uh, you know, coffee with the police officer, you know, that's something, that's a Thomasville initiative. Uh, but those things are few and far between, but you really have to do the legwork to really get into the community. And so I would like to see them, you know, really know their beats and know the people, like, I should know my officer by name. Right? The person who serves my district, I should know him by name. And so that's what the, the level of, uh, community care that I wanna see from police.
Okay, alright, so we have to wrap this up. We even got our, uh, audience just letting us know, like, y'all been here a little too long. Go, we gotta go. Y'all know.
We know Stanley. Everybody knows Stanley.
Right, Stanley. You know, this conversation needs to be even longer, for real, for real, but let's, let's. I still wanna respect your time, Stanley, like you gotta go to work, so, um, tomorrow, so I think we all do, actually. Alright, so my very last question and then we're done. Um, is about economic development, right? So everywhere, especially those who are, um, incumbents have made mention about economic development. It's as if y'all know this, well, we all know, actually federal dollars are gonna be trickling into communities to help stimulate the local economy. So I can imagine there is a lot of, uh, uh, desires to wanna stay in office so that they can contribute to that work. So I get that. Um, but Joey mentioned, uh, which I think is a valid point, is a lot of the jobs. And you probably even noticed in our Community Builders commercial, a lot of jobs that come to town, they are on the lower end salary. Um, salary wise. And with so many universities and colleges in our community. Uh, a lot of people feel that, especially in the millennial population, feel that there's just not enough competitive jobs. So what are your thoughts, Rick, or what plans do you have to combat that? Um, and with these, these job options, I mean, even Amazon, okay, yeah, it'll, it'll get a lot of people jobs. But what about the educated community? What jobs can we look forward to?
Well, I, I here's, I mean, I think you may have heard, people may have heard this statistic before. But Leon County is the most educated county in the state of Florida. You know, if you take a look at, um, bachelor's degrees per capita, master's degrees per capita, so, which is terrific. Uh, we've got a, we've got a, a, a workforce here which is, um, highly educated. And then what, what we need to do is, is really help folks develop their skills to be more marketable. Um, you mentioned Amazon, you know, I, I was, I was glad that Amazon is, you know, is, decided to come here. Um, that's a thousand new employees, you know, healthcare benefits on day one, uh, college tuition paid for, you know, while they're employees. You know, that type of thing. Shortly after Amazon decided to come here. I started working with Amazon Web Services, AWS, uh, which does a lot of the, the cloud computing's, um, um, architecture. Uh, behind a lot of, um, um, internet applications these days and websites. Um, what we're starting to do is, is talk with TCC, Live Tech Center, um, FSU. To help encourage the development of clouds, uh, computing skills. Um, and here's the thing, not only can someone with a college degree take this road and get these skills and earn a high-paying job. But people that may not have a college degree at all can take some of these. But people that may not have a college degree at all can take some of these cloud computing courses with T C C and Lively Tech Center. Earn skills that allow them to, to get hired at a job that can pay up to fifty thousand dollars a year. Without a college degree. So if we can do that, you know, and, and this is a good example. You know, A W S is, working with T C C and Lively, I mean, they now um, offer these, these cloud computing courses. Um, to, to basically help skills get, you know, developed among, among um, among people that really could use that benefit. Um, by helping people gain those skills, they can become more marketable, they earn more. And you know, the best way to, to address poverty. Affordable housing issues, crime, really is to help people earn more. If we can help lift the average income in this county. That will help um, indirectly address a lot of the social issues that we've been talking about during this last hour.
Thank you. So you talked about the social issues and I just want to make sure I understood your answer. You're saying if we can improve the social services that's offered in this county?
No ma'am, I, I, I was saying if we can help, if, if we can help people um. Raise their incomes, if we can help build skills so that they're marketable it to a greater degree. They can either um, find a new job, get a, maybe expand their existing job, earn more salary.
Um, that's why I kinda lost it. Okay, so that, thank you for clarifying for that.
So, so yeah, if, if they, if they earn more, that helps address a lot of the social problems that we've been talking about for the last hour in terms of poverty. Homelessness, affordable housing, crime.
Mm-hmm. That's kind of scary though, because a number of the commissioners have said, oh, or in those running for office have said. Well, if we get them access to training, access to education, but you said it even in your initial statement that we're one of the most. More educated communities uh, in, for, in Florida, really. Um, so what? Are we the more educated or do we need more skills? Where, where, where's the disconnect?
The, the divide between haves and have-nots is, is pretty s- strong here in Leon County. You know, you, yes, we've got. We've got, we're the most educated county in Florida. We also have very high poverty and very high food insecurity. And I know this because of my work. As CEO of the food bank. Uh, we have lots of homeless, uh, people that are struggling with homelessness and. I know that because I sit on the board of the Big Ben Continuum of Care and have those meetings where we meet with all the nonprofits to talk about. What they're doing to help reduce homelessness. So um, so it's, it's, it's all about the haves and have-nots. And for decades. Um, there have been powerful forces that have um, forged ahead. And have ignored wide swaths of, of the county and whole neighbors have been uh, neglected and ignored and. And one thing, I bet Stanley will probably back me up on this if he's still listening, but one thing that we've done over the last few years. Is invest a lot more blueprint dollars, more economic, especially the infrastructure dollars, but economic development dollars too. On helping to um, address that neglect. You know, we, we've invested um. Uh, I think it's like more than three hundred million dollars in south side projects. Um, over the next few years are for construction. So that type of investment going into the south side. Doesn't, doesn't totally solve the decades of neglect, but it gets us going in the right direction. And uh, finally, this community is starting to recognize, and the city and county commissioners. Are, are understanding that that is necessary to overcome some of the injustice of the past.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I'm still trying to find out about the economic development. Uh, you know, for, for, and let's just say the people of your district, how can you help those small business owners? The people who are skilled, the ones who would have, if you, you know, solely, um, the ones who are educated. What resources do, can you help those individuals with if you have any plans to do so?
It's kind of like what I was talking about. I mean, the, the example I gave about A W S, Amazon Web Services with the cloud computing skills. I mean, it's, it, the, the more um, skills development we have our workforce engage in. Um, you know, businesses will be able to take advantage of that. And um, I, I've talked with I T and you know. Uh, the I T industry here is very bullish on the future. They'll tell you uh, that they expect Tallahassee to become a regional tech hub. In the next few years. Um, and so, I mean, you, you focus on one part of the county, I mean, we're all one community. And so. By having skills development on, in, in one sector, I T. If we become that regional hub that many of the I T industry leaders here are talking about. Um, that's gonna basically spill over into other uh, areas as well, you know?
Rick, and can you briefly tell us uh, some of your experience in business, business management, uh, business administration? What are some of your experiences with that?
Absolutely. Well, I, I'm, as a teenager, I, I um, I, I ran um. An auction uh, for, for collectible records. So I mean, that was what I did, you basically, you know. It's a long story, but, but had that business for a bit. Um, I actually have uh, uh, worked in the private sector. Uh, uh, for a public policy consulting firm and did that, uh, helping develop public policy, but then. Um, did quite a bit of the financial operations of that business. It was about fifteen uh, people. Um, but basically helping to run the financial aspects of that business while doing public policy as well. Also, I worked for about nine years for a global business and I T consulting firm. Uh, and got a lot of great experience on that. I worked all over the United States as well as um, South Africa. Um, Germany, Denmark, Hong Kong, uh, really got a lot of great experience doing that. So. I believe I'm the only candidate in this race that has experience in both government, nonprofit and business. And these days you need to have that breadth of experience to be um, the most effective commissioner that you can be.
Thank you. Okay, so we're wrapping up, so I'll give the last few minutes to you. Um, Joey, if you can kind of uh, tell us what uh, plans would you have in terms of economic development? Uh, and to help with jobs um, and higher paying jobs and to help those who are a part of the more educated. Part of the community, specifically to those in your district. And thank you to your daughter, Rick. I know she's looking like, hello, I gotta play Legos.
Did you see her? She's waiting to play Legos in a second.
Joey, it's on you. Sorry, I'm so sorry. It echoes when both of you guys are on, so that's why I have to mute one, but go ahead, Joey, you got it.
Alright, um, when we talk about economic development, that goes back to the blueprint and the, the, uh, giving the money to. Um, give the money to dope, like that money could have gone to making a, at least an overture out to Ford at that time. Ford was looking for a location to build their electric vehicle plant. And that would have been a great place for Tallahassee to come, to bring in um, a great American company with great blue collar jobs. To, to great people here in Tallahassee, but we can't even make that overture now, uh, because those funds have gone to the stadium. When you look at the gap between people with college degrees and not college degrees, if you look at the most recent data. Ninety-six percent, I believe, of the residents in Leon County graduate from high school. But only forty-eight percent of the residents Leon County have a four-year degree at age twenty-five or older. So what does that mean? It means that we need to start creating some skilled labor positions, electrician, carpentry, plumbing. Uh, investing in those areas, getting people to, to go into those areas because those are high-paying jobs. I think I looked at an article in Forbes that said, um, plumbers were starting out at around thirty-one dollars an hour.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Joey, but uh, you know, that's what Rick said. He said that they are doing programs to increase in skills. So the question is, if you were elected, what would you do in terms of those who currently need help with? Economic development, need assistance with that, what opportunities would you think you would be able to bring? Sorry to cut you off, but we're just really short on time.
Well, we, we gotta introduce them to the programs um, that are in place. Um, the city has a temple program, which I think is, is great. Um, I think we really need to be pushing those programs that we have to get people in those skilled positions because there's a high demand for people who want those jobs.
Mm-hmm. So for higher paying jobs, do you see any way of trying to help those who are in your district to get higher paying jobs?
Um, that's not.
Other than skills?
I don't think that's a district-specific question. Uh, one of the great things about Tallahassee is you have, you know, great college, you got F S U, you got F A M U, you got T C C. Right? And we train some of the best and brightest in all career paths, especially business. And then they go to Atlanta, New York, Houston and take the skills they learned here in Tallahassee and give them there. So we need to start attracting more of these um, firms to come to Leon County in Tallahassee. The Delores and Tushas, the Ernst and Youngs, the Price Waterhouse Coopers, the Mackenzie and Companies, the Booze, the Booze Allen, uh, Hamiltons, uh, some of these. Uh, you know, a- and some of these mid-size, mid-sized accounting firms as well. Grant Thornton would be a great one. So we've got to start attracting some of these mid-sized accounting firms and marketing firms, the consulting firms to Leon County. So we can keep that talent here uh, in Leon County instead of having it go out to other places.
Well, I mentioned the district to know if you, how would you cater to those in your district to help them uh, get some of those benefits? But you know, to your point, uh, do you think you would be able to attract some of those type of firms to, to Tallahassee?
I think Tallahassee is a very attractive city for, uh, for business. Like, it is a, a very attractive town and I think that we'll be able to get that done. I. I think the chamber would, would help out with that and I think we could work together.
Do you have a relationship with members at the chamber?
I have literally with some members of the trainer, not all of them, but yes, I have a list with some members of the trainer, yes.
Okay, okay. Alright, guys, we gotta go. We gotta go. So this conversation has been so good. Thank you guys so much. Um, for being here, uh, but I do want to respect you all's time. You guys have been very lenient with me and, and stayed as long as you have. Um, but I don't want to take too much advantage. So um, I do want to give you guys an opportunity to just say a skill to the community. Uh, I do have a timer here, um, to allow you to speak for uh, forty-five? Let's just do a minute. You got a minute? Yeah, okay. So you got a minute to go and you just tell the community basically why should they vote for you? Um, and so uh, incumbents do get the privilege to go last, or is that the privilege? I guess the benefit, I don't know. We just allowed y'all to go last. Um, but uh, Joey, so you're gonna go first and then uh, Ricky will go after. And then we'll just wrap this up and say goodnight.
Uh, well, thank you, R J. And I want to thank community um, builders. I want to thank dream defenders for, for having this. Um, it's been my greatest thrill because this is our last public uh, forum. It's been my greatest thrill to be able to run for office. Um, it's been my greatest thrill to get to know you. It's been the greatest honor that I'll ever have if you allow me to, to serve. As your next county commissioner. Uh, I've met so many interesting people. Uh, in our district, there's a direct descendant. Of John Quincy Adams in our district. I mean, I, I, how amazing is that? Um, there are people in our district, when the college students come in, and they're coming in this week. Who go to them and say, when you're tired of uh, eating ramen noodles, come by my house and I give you uh, a home-cooked meal. He had fourteen people come to his house for Thanksgiving. And these are the type of people that I can't wait to serve as county commissioner. We're gonna address the issues that need to be addressed, affordable housing, homelessness, crime, but it's really the people. That you want to serve and it's you that inspire me to get up every day and go knock on one more door. And I just want to thank you. Um, for welcoming me. I've never been embraced in a city like I've been embraced in Leon County in Tallahassee. And I had an opportunity to leave, but I said, I can't leave this place because they didn't turn their back on me. And so I'm not gonna turn my back on them. And so I am more than thrilled to uh, have the opportunity to serve. The opportunity to serve as this county commissioner. And I'll ask you to vote for me on August twenty-third, uh, even before that, on August thirteenth, early voting starts. If you want more information about my policies and the brighter vision I see for this county, please visit my website and donate at helpjoeywin.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joey. And I'm sorry, I do have your information to put across the screen. I don't know if you guys did the uh, or you. We had a form, a registration form where you would submit that, those documents in it. I didn't see that come in, but uh, you're more than welcome to leave your information. Um, in the comments and then we can take it from there and add it to promotion material later. And of course, for those interested, they can follow you from there. So, uh, but thank you again for being here. Uh, last but not least, Rick Minor.
Thanks, R J. And, and thanks for, for hosting this, another great forum. I also want to thank the community builders and dream defenders. Um, my daughters. Um, listen, I. You know, often when people run for office, you hear a lot of platitudes. Uh, one thing I'm very proud of being able to talk about is real solutions over the last four years. Uh, we've done, accomplished a lot in a short amount of time on, on pretty big, heavy issues in this county. Um, four years ago, when I ran for county commission, um, during the early voting period, I, I, I basically parked myself in front of. One of the early voting locations. And people would go in and they would, they would look at me as they go inside. And then when they would come out, some of them would say. You know, Rick, I voted for you, make it count. And, you know, I think about that often. Um, you know, we're in office to, to really make the most of the time we have here. Uh, the seat doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the people that I work for. And um, my job and I, as I see it, is to do. Everything I can and the time I have here to serve the, the, the people of District Three and the county. And uh, we made a lot of strides in North Monroe, Tharp Street. Um, I personally led initiatives on food insecurity. Uh, we're doing some great work on homelessness, um, and we're fighting crime. And those are what people care about and. And so, um. Vote for me on August twenty-third. Thanks so much for your support.
And thank you. Thank you both for being here. I really enjoyed your time and conversation. Um, and I say to every single uh, person in this race, I really hope that your servitude is not limited to this race. Regardless of what happened on election day, I highly encourage and employ you to stay committed, stay involved in the community because the needs of our community. Is not, you know, only on the hands of the government. I don't know if you've been on our website, but we say it clearly, it's not just the government's uh. I mean, it is their responsibility, but not only them that, that, that can help our community. It's, we need all hands on deck. And so I hope that. You continue to stay involved, continue to look to serve. Um, and if you can't find anywhere to serve, trust me, community builders have plenty. Ways for you to. So thank you guys for being here. Are you guys coming on Thursday?
I think so. I think I'll be there.
Okay, and uh, and then if you can, at least share the flyer with your audiences. Can I count on y'all to do that?
Yeah.
I'll share, yeah, I have a problem doing it.
Yeah. Alright, well, I look forward to us having a great time on Thursday. We, as professionals, need to have a safe space to socialize and so. Uh, to be a part of that, to lead that charge. I'm super excited about that project and I look forward to continuing to do it. Alright, we're leaving. Bye, baby girl. Thanks for being here.
R J, thanks so much.
We really appreciate it. It's really important to have this conversation. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
You too.
Alright, guys, so this wraps up this week's forums. I really hope that all of your answers. Have been, I mean, all of your questions have been answered, or the better thing, if it has poses new questions for you to look into. I highly encourage that you do the research that needs to be done. We've been hosting forums of just about every major entity this uh, week. The only one missing was the governor, um, and that's kind of next level, but I don't never want to just go talk to the government, the governor. We want to definitely have some more. Uh, data, some more uh, research back information. So uh, maybe as we continue to grow, we'll be able to uh, interview the, the governor. But I hope that you found value in the conversations that we did have. Um, and if you can't, if you are looking for uh, information. There are so many platforms where you can find uh, information. There's ourtallahassee.com, there's uh, leonvotes.org. I mean, so much data as well as the, the sites of those who are running. Uh, you can get their information and find other. Uh, just put in Google News and the person's name to confirm the things that they are saying. A lot of the commissioner reports and a lot of the reports that uh, these uh, people who run for public office have is public information. So you can contact the agency they work for to confirm stuff. So I know it sounds like a lot of work, but that's why we're in the situation we're in. Where we have politicians come into these seats and not do what they say they're gonna do. And they cost us a lot in our communities. I know as millennials, a lot of us do not want to be a part of it. We can't trust politicians. The story goes on and on and on, but the only way that we're gonna be able to make the change is if we do the homework. Um, and so I hope that we can be, uh, us, when I say us, I mean, community builders can be a reliable source for you. Uh, to be someone that can help you uh, figure out the answers that you're, that you're looking to find out about. I want to remind you all that milli- um, Millennial Mingle is tomorrow. I want, I hope you guys can come. Check us out, check us out. Yep, that's it, that's it. I really hope that you guys can come and hang out with us. Um, there is more information on our website. W W W dot uh, buildingstrongcommunities.net. We're also on social media, uh, community builders three sixty. Um, we're on Twitter, C O M M builders. Um, and so in any way that you can be engaged. I encourage you to do so. I'm very, very happy that you all supported us during this week of festivities, I'd like to call it. Um, our politicians don't really get positive support. We need them to be motivated because we need them to work. We don't want them. Uh, just collecting our tax dollars and doing the bare minimum. We need them to be motivated and knowing that the people are here uh, for them. So. Uh, thank y'all for tuning in. Um, and big shout out to dream defenders. If you're not a member, it's free to become a member. They are the ones doing the radical work on the streets, boots on the ground, uh, making sure that the. making sure that the people are fully engaged, fully aware, a learning of how to protect yourself, learning of how to, you know, to be, stand in these spaces, these political spaces, and still be confident. So if that's you, or you feel like there's so much happening, I don't know where to go, I don't know where to turn to, Dream Defenders is one of the top organizations who not only are just mission-driven, but they are people-driven. They invest in their people, they support their people, and they care for their people. They run and operate as a family. You go on trips, they pay for it. They do all kinds of things to show that they're not just monetarily driven, but they are really mission-driven. And so, I highly encourage you to visit their website, dreamdefenders.org, www.dreamdefenders.org. They are on social media as well. Dream Defenders Tallahassee is live and full effect. And thanks again for tuning in and supporting. I wish y'all a great night.
The other side said we're too radical, because we believe everybody should have access to healthcare.
Because we think one job should be enough to pay your bills.
Because no one's future should be determined by a zip code.
We're called too radical because
We don't want to be shot dead by police.
Because we believe making a profit out of caging people is wrong.
We're too radical because we want our public schools funded.
Because we want to learn our true history.
They call us radical because we think voting is a basic human right.
Because we were born to immigrant parents.
Because we are immigrants.
They say we're too radical because
We want an end to war.
We want to be safe.
Because we want to be free.
And if one basic rights makes us too radical,
I'll be that.